Rahim, session resumes. May we request MP Abdul Wahab Pak to lead the invocation.
Allahumma sallim ala siyidina muhammed. Walal hi wushahbi ajmain. Robbana az zalamna anfussana wa illam taghfir lana wa tarhamna rakunun khashdu. Robbana innana samiina munadi yunadi lil imani an aaminu bi rabbikum fa amanda. Robbana faghfir lana fa innaka antaghfur rahim. Robbana faghfirlana fa innaka antagharfur rahim. Warhamna fa innaka xir rahmin. Allahumma la tad'alana zamban fi hazal maqawm illa ghafurta. Walamariidan illa shafaita. Waladainan illa qadayta. Walahajatan min hawaaj jana fi hazil hayat. Illa antana ala qadahaya rabbal alamin. Robbana fregarinas sabra. Musabit akdamanawun sun alalkumil kafirin. Walhamdillah rabbal.
Floor leader.
Audubillah minasyaitan wa radhim bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Madam speaker, before we proceed with the unfinished period of interpolation, in yesterday's session, may I move Madam Speaker to amend the order of business and include in the bills on second reading, BTA Parliament Bill Number 411.
There's a motion to amend the order of business to include in the agenda, Bangsa Muro Parliament Bill Number 411, any second. Any objections? There being none, the order of business is hereby amended.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, considering that none of the authors are present today, it has been relayed to me or manifested to me, Madam Speaker, that the explanatory note in the bill shall serve as the authorship speech, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, floor leader. Just a point of order, may I know what would be the implication of two bills being authored by the same principal author?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I believe, Madam Speaker, that any member of parliament may file two or more bills on the same subject matter, Madam Speaker. It would depend on the concerned MP which of the bills he or she will pursue, Madam Speaker.
For the education of everyone, what is the difference between being a principal author and then co-author?
Madam Speaker, in this present case, Madam Speaker, the concerned MP are both principal authors of BTA Bill 411 and the other bill, Madam Speaker, concerning the same subject matter. However, Madam Speaker, there is no limitation on each of the MPs on the number of bills they may file, Madam Speaker.
Thank you for that explanation. I can see MP Amboluto raising his hand. Can...
Madam Speaker, may MP Amboluto be recognized?
MP Amboluto is recognized.
Madam Speaker, Mr. Deputy Floor Leader, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi talabu arakatuh. Thank you very much, ma'am, for raising that very significant matter that is not covered by our current rules. We may not have anticipated these things happening, but I would really request that this matter, I'm not sure how, but this should be discussed by the Committee on Rules so that appropriate rectification in our rules be done so that in the future situations such as this may be avoided. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. And the presiding officer would also appreciate any explanation on what is the difference between being a principal author and a co-author? Yes, MP Amboluto, if you could share your insights.
Madam Speaker, when we put on the principal authors, basically, these are the architects of the very document that is being propounded and proposed to this legislative body. And the co-authors simply appears to be simply rejoining. They share the sense and sentiment. However, they simply are not party to the construction of the very development of the proposed legislative measure. That is how I would understand it. And I would presume that that is the practice that we have conducted. So the point still, Madam Speaker, the meat of the point that you have raised, I think that would have to be addressed immediately in the Committee on Rules, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Just to really elaborate, especially to those who are watching us and who are seeing, watching how we do our sessions, I make reference to BTA Bill Number 403 and the BTA Bill Number 411, which are now both principally authored by a particular member of the parliament. And if that explanation sticks, that they are the architects of the bills. And these are both districting bills. I think we really have to make a distinction as to what would be the implication of having two bills principally authored by the same member of the parliament. So yun po yun, ladies and gentlemen, nanonood saka kasamahan na mga members of the parliament. There are two districting bills now that are going to be principally authored by one particular member of the parliament. And what would be the implication, whether which bill would eventually be supported by that member of the parliament? Thank you.
Madam Speaker, may I move to recognize Deputy Speaker Omar Sem.
Deputy Speaker Sem is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, floor leader. Madam Speaker, may I just manifest my perspective on the matter being discussed now on the floor? That I believe if two bills are inconsistent with each other and there is one common author, the author of both bills would, I mean, the authorship of both bills, of the other bill that is inconsistent with the other will have resulted in withdrawing his authorship on a previous bill. That is my perspective, Madam Speaker, for the record, Madam Speaker.
Thank you for that point. So these are matters that the Committee on Rules should take into consideration whenever this issue is going to be tackled. No? Okay. So, floor leader?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. With that, Madam Speaker, may I respectfully move that BTA Bill Number 411 be referred to the Committee on Rules and Committee...
Floor leader, may we first direct the secretariat to read?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I'm sorry. Madam Speaker, may we direct the secretariat to read BTA Bill Number 411, its title and its authors and co-authors?
Secretariat, please read the name of the bill and the names of the co-authors and the co-authors.
BTA Parliament Bill Number 411 entitled "An Act Providing for the Creation of Parliamentary Districts in a Bangsa-Muro Autonomous Region in Muslimidinaw." Authors: Members of Parliament: Baintan Nambatuhan, Jose Lorena, Khalid Haji Abdallah, and Siti Pahani Uwi Oyod.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I respectfully move that BTA Bill Number 411 be referred to the Committee on Rules and Committee on Local Government. So move, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion to refer BTA Bill Number 411 to both the Committee on Rules and the Committee on Local Government. Any second, any objections? There being none, it is now referred to both committees.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Now, Madam Speaker, we move on the continuation of the period of interpolation on Committee Report Number 172 regarding BTA Parliament Bill Number 325. Madam Speaker, may I move to recognize MP Matalam for his interpolation?
MP Matalam, is he around?
Assalamualaikum.
Via Zoom.
Madam Speaker.
Okay, and we also recognize the chairperson of the Committee on Finance and Budget and Management, who will be responding to the queries. Okay, MP Matalam be recognized.
Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Is the proponent would allow some clarifications on the said act, Madam Speaker?
Yes, Honorable MP Matalam, sir?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a few questions lang, Madam Speaker, for clarification. Itong Budget System Act na piniprescribe natin, gusto ko lang maintindihan on sa basis no transparencia doon sa act na ito. What are the... ano 'yung nagsasabi na nagiging transparencia at nai-involve 'yung public dito sa budget system na gagawin natin?
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Greetings to the honorable Madam Presiding Officer, Attorney Laiha Dumama, to the Deputy Floor Leader, Attorney Raheem, and to the interpolator, Honorable Attorney Matalam, or the Honorable Jafar Matalam, sir. So, the basis for the... in the bill is Section 67, which states that people's, under Title 6, transparency and participation, Section 67, people's access to public financial information. So under this particular provision, allow me to read it. For the information of the body, "To enhance transparency and enforce accountability, all MOAs, including BG OCCs, shall maintain a transparency seal on their respective official websites as required under this act and under the general provisions of the annual GAAP. Transparency seal shall contain relevant budget information such as approved budgets and targets, programs, and project categories, beneficiaries and status implementation, evaluation and/or assessment, accomplishment reports, annual procurement plans, and contracts awarded, among others. The minister or head of office or BG OCCs shall be responsible for ensuring compliance with this section. The Bangsa Muro Budget Office shall monitor and periodically report to the parliament and the public on the compliance of MOAs and BG OCCs with a transparency seal." So aside from making the public financial information available in their website, in order to ensure that this is genuine information, the ministries or heads of offices as well as heads of the BG OCCs shall attach their transparency seal. And on top of that, under Section 68, the MFBM shall publish, every year, citizen-friendly summaries of the GAAP that contain an in-depth explanation and descriptive nature of the GAAP, including both qualitative and quantitative data, or rather, quantitative data to help the people understand and appreciate fiscal and budget information. And lastly, we have your people's participation in the budgeting process. So if the... this is contained under Section 69, this is also in compliance with the constitutional mandate of freedom of information. The Bangsa Muro government shall establish and implement suitable participatory budget mechanisms to facilitate the open, inclusive, and meaningful engagement of citizens throughout the budgeting process.
Right. Thank you very much. Maganda naman pala 'yung transparencisip. Ang gusto ko lang maintindihan, Madam Speaker, ito ba ang mechanism na ito is existing na ba? Or kailangan pang ituro sa... kung sakasakaling iapprove natin ito, kailangan pa bang ituro to sa mga ministries or government agencies?
This is... certain ministries are already practicing it. So this is an existing process. But this will, with the enactment of this law, this will become mandatory upon the ministries, offices, and agencies and not merely a policy direction. Meaning to say, it's existing, sir, Madam Speaker.
A existing na siya. Pero ang gusto ko lang sana i... kung sakasakali, because of... dahil nga may transparencia tayo and it's related to moral governance. Can we not upgrade it higher 'yung transparencia natin by using blockchain? Is the proponent amenable to that?
First and foremost, at the outset, let me thank the honorable MP Matalam for suggesting the blockchain and in fact had allowed me to research on the matter prior hand so that I may understand what blockchain is. In the national level, there is a drive for the enactment of a law for the use of the blockchain system. Ang kagandahan kasi na 'yung blockchain system, the beauty of it is that it cannot be modified and the record is within all users. Meaning to say, you cannot modify that particular data in one system if it does not reflect the same data in another system. Meaning to say, parang immutable siya, hindi siya napapalitan. So totally mahirap if, in fact, na kung kayaman, almost impossible siya napalitan 'yung data because all users must have the same data contained in those ledgers or information or storage. However, further study, and I might add that this... the proponent suggests that this is better to be adopted in a more comprehensive law so that it will cover the ministries, offices, and agencies as well as we'll discuss the particular cause of adopting the system itself, sir.
Right. Thank you very much for... Madam Speaker, at least na meron pa lang naintindihan si proponent natin sa blockchain. Pero ang... kasi ito 'yung act na nandito ngayon, na sa floor. So, kung sakasakali, I think baka sa kamings... in proper time, siguro, Madam Chair, if Madam Speaker, if you will allow some amendments on this act, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, we would welcome the proposed amendments of the honorable MP Matalam and we would examine it judicially, insya'Allah.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That's all.
Thank you, MP Matalam. Madam Speaker, next to interpolate, Madam Speaker, may I move to recognize Deputy Speaker Alamiya?
Deputy Speaker Alamiya, is she on Zoom?
Yes, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumsalam, you are recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would just like to turn off my video because the network here is fluctuating. Madam Speaker, I would like to extend my commendations to the sponsor and the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management for their diligent work on this bill. This is a foundational piece of legislation and I believe that this law should be reformed and reached positioning Baran as a leader in public financial management. My questions, Madam Speaker, are intended to help us achieve that goal by strengthening the bill's provisions on oversight, accountability, and implementation. If I may proceed, Madam Speaker, I would like to start on financial management, investments, and oversight. My first point, Madam Speaker and the proponent, concerns Title IV, specifically Section 55 on investments, which grants new and broad powers to the Bangsa Muro Treasury Office or the BTO. Establish a baseline, Madam Speaker. Could the distinguished sponsor please clarify for the record the key mandates of the BTO and how it differs from that of the National Bureau of Treasury or the BTR, particularly in relation to cash management and investment?
A moment, Madam Speaker.
Okay, one minute suspension. Session resumes.
Uh Madam Speaker, uh to continue, the Bangsa-Moro Treasury Office uh essentially has the same function of that of the Bureau of the Treasury. Uh spec, when, and also pertaining to uh Section 55 Investment, uh it also has the same function in assisting in the uh in uh the formulation of policies on borrowing, investment, and uh capital market development. Uh Madam Speaker.
Deputy Speaker Alamiya, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It appears, Madam Speaker, if we, if we compare the National Bureau of Treasury, and this is based on Executive Order Number 292 and other, and other laws, the BTR at the national level has both the sell side and the buy side when it comes to investment, cash management and investment. Meaning, they can issue securities for debt and they can also invest, so that's the buy-side function. But the BARM Admin Code, BAA Number 13, gives the, our own BARM uh Bureau of Treasury Office a buy-side mandate, so we, we cannot, we do not sell, we do not issue securities for debt, but we invest. Now, and as mentioned by the proponent, Madam Speaker, this is what is found in Section 55, which now uh appears to authorize specifically the BTO uh for that mandate. So, this question confirms uh our understanding before we, uh well, we would, I would like to ask uh more questions about this now. Considering that Section 55 authorizes the BTO to invest uh quote-unquote portions of the funds held in the STA, which is the Single Treasury Account. My question is, what precisely are these uh portions of the funds? That's the exact uh phrase, portions of the funds. What are these portions of the funds, Madam Speaker?
These are idle funds, uh uh for, I'll uh read it uh for better understanding. Under GAAP 2025. So under Section 10, which was contained in uh the General Appropriations uh of the Bangsa-Moro, idle funds uh "to invest idle funds in excess of normal operating requirement to the Bureau of Treasury in the form of treasury bills, subject to cash requirements of the Bangsa-Moro Government and approval of the Parliament through the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management," um, Madam Chair.
Uh Madam, Madam Speaker, is this, uh, thank you, Mr. Proponent, uh is that, Madam Speaker, what was mentioned, is it found in this uh PB Number 325? Or is that in the uh Bangsa-Moro Appropriations Act? Is that provision in the Bangsa-Moro Appropriations Act?
That is uh under the Bangsa-Moro Appropriations uh Act for 2025, uh, Madam Speaker. Uh, these funds are also um deposited or contained in a STA he- account held by the Bangsa-Moro Treasury Office.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So there is no specific definition of what portions of uh the funds um means in PB Number 325. There is no definition, and in fact, it only uses the term portions of the funds, which, Madam Speaker, uh clearly, we need to have a definition because this is essential for accountability. Um if we refer only to the Bangsa-Moro Appropriations Act for 2025, that's a, that's a specific, uh, that's a specific provision that is found in the BAA, which may change in the following BAA and which is not present in the previous BAAs. But 325 would need um, would need a clear definition. Without it, the, the BTO could be investing money that's needed for next month's payroll or for project commitments due next quarter. Now, Madam Speaker, um I would just like to, uh for the record, notify this August body. The Department of Finance, for example, under uh Department Order Number 0712018, it provides a detailed two-part test for what constitutes idle funds. It defines them as the level of funds which an entity can freely invest after considering provisions for coverage of such regular and requiring operating expenses and local counterpart commitments for capital expenditures within the current fiscal year, Madam Speaker. So, is the um sponsor willing uh to accept uh recommendations or proposal for amendments to clearly define what portions of the funds mean under uh PB Number 325, under Section uh Section 55, Madam Speaker?
Uh Madam Speaker, uh this representation agrees with the Honorable Deputy Speaker Alamiya that there is a need to specifically define what idle funds are in order to promote accountability, and we welcome any proposed amendment. Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. My next question to follow up on Section 35E of this bill, uh which say it, it mandates that unobligated allotments and unexpend, the undisputed funds from ministries, uh offices, and agencies due to low utilization shall revert to the Bangsa-Moro Treasury. Will the sponsor, Madam Speaker, confirm if these reverted funds, which represent uh a failure to deliver uh public services and are largely sourced from the black grant, are included in the portions of funds that the BTO uh is authorized to invest under Section 55?
Uh no ma'am, it's not part of the uh idle funds. Those who have reverted uh back to the treasury are not fund, uh part of the idle funds, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you. Now, uh I believe that uh this might, if, if ever this will be included, this might constitute a major governance red flag for two reasons. First, uh the national government's own practices in the same uh department order that I mentioned earlier, explicitly exclude funds that are not true surplus. So 'yung hindi totoong surplus. For LGUs, it prohibits investing unremitted national collections and funds set aside for payments of obligations. And so, this establishes a clear principle. Money that is simply held for a specific purpose should not be invested. And uh second, more importantly, the funds reverting under Section 35E are largely from our black grant. So the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law is explicit that the black grant must be allocated through an appropriations act passed by the Parliament for a very specific program. And which leads me to uh my, leads me to this uh next question, Madam Speaker. Does the sponsor agree that unobligated allotments from low uh MOA ministry ofi- or office or agency utilization are not through idle funds? Uh and, and given the nature of the black grant, should not these reverted funds be explicitly excluded from the investable portions in Section 55? Meaning, lalagyan talaga natin ng provision, i-sasabihin talaga that reverted funds, which are uh the part, part of the black grant, and these are the unobligated allotments from the low utilization of the agencies, uh should be excluded from the investable portions in Section 55 and instead uh will be quarantined only, if I may use the term. It is quarantined only uh in the BTO for re, only for reapropriation by this Parliament. Does the sponsor agree with this?
Yes, uh uh I agree, Madam Speaker. And in fact, this is reflected under Section 35E, uh but uh a more particular and specific wording uh I think is uh needed to specifically define it. According to Paragraph E of Section 35, unobligated allotments at the end of the EPP shall revert to the Bangsa-Moro Treasury and uh shall require, and shall form part of a special fund for reapropriation. Meaning to say, if uh it is not part of the idle fund, but uh it requires reapropriation, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, uh Madam Speaker. Uh I will be proposing a specific uh language for this for the explicit exclusion from the investable portions of the fund under Section uh 55. Because to not allow, uh to not to do so would allow a failure of governance, which is the inability to spend funds for the people to be converted into a financial in, investment. Now, Mr. Speaker, uh Madam Speaker, sorry. Uh Section 55 uh states that this entire investment process will be based on terms and conditions as may be determined by the Chief Minister. This is very specific in Section 55. The national government, Madam Speaker, and even those of other countries, own rules for this are not left to one person. If we read uh the rules on public finance management in other countries with a parliamentary form of government, and even the national government of the Philippines, uh they are not left to one person. They are codified in public, multi-page orders or rules. Question, Madam Speaker, why is the authority to set the entire investment strategy for the people's money delegated solely to the executive? Why is the Parliament being completely bypassed? What happens if these investments made without the Parliament's concurrence result in a significant financial loss? So this question, Madam Speaker, is a, is a question of foresight. We would like to see, and we would like to analyze what may happen in the future uh if, if we have, we have a different Parliament, we have a different Chief Minister, for example, uh ten years from now, and this law has already been passed, this bill has been passed. Um and the power to set the entire investment, investment strategy is left uh to, delegated solely to the executive. What happens now if these investments will result in a significant financial loss? Would the sponsor be amenable to a critical reform-driven amendment requiring the BTO's annual investment strategy to be submitted to the Parliament? Would you be amenable to that through the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management for review and concurrence before any investments are made, Madam Speaker?
Uh Madam Speaker, uh I agree with that, and in fact, uh the uh the provision under the General Appropriations uh of the Bangsa-Moro contained uh a particular uh particular um requirement there that it must be, the, the investment must be upon the approval of the Parliament. However, uh I submit that Section 55 should um should adopt that particular provision that it must be upon approval of the Parliament, and uh uh it is well taken that it can be upon uh the review of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management. Um with respect to uh the statement that it is solely um solely upon uh the discretion of one person, the Section 55 also states that it is upon the recommendation of the Minister of Finance uh and Budget and Management. But I think uh a more, uh the provision in the General Appropriations of the Bangsa-Moro should be contained in Section 55. I submit to the proposal of the Interpretor, Honorable Diaz Alamiya, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much to the proponent. Uh I will be submitting the proposed uh language uh for this amendment uh in Section 55. Madam Speaker, let me go to the uh chapter on savings, augmentation, and constitutional limits. Now, my second point concerns the bill's framework for savings and augmentation, which appears to consolidate the discretionary power in the executive at that expense of Parliament's constitutional mandate. Now, this, this is in two parts, Madam Speaker. First, the very definition of savings under Section 46, which is the legal basis for the power of the executive to realign funds under uh Section 47. So, uh there's Section 46, savings may be declared when there are balances of any program appropriations in the GAAP, et cetera. Uh you may read uh under Section uh 46. Um and then, and, and so on, including the Um, and then, and, and so on, including the, uh, paragraph on the, uh, final discontinuance or abandonment of a P A P, a project, a P V T O program, whether released on or released allotment for which remain unobligated may be declared by the Chief Minister as savings in case of a declaration of a state of national or regional calamity, et cetera. Madam Speaker, um, let me bring us all back uh, to the case of Auronio versus Aquino, the third. At that time, this was during the, the time of the A R M M. I was the Executive Secretary at the time. The Supreme Court made a decision with respect to the D A P or the Disbursement Acceleration Program. This is a very controversial case, Madam Speaker, if you remember. And the Supreme Court ruled that funds from slow-moving projects or those with implementation delays cannot be declared as savings. Savings, as defined under the law according to the Supreme Court, can only be declared when a project is finally completed, discontinued officially or abandoned officially, meaning there is a declaration that the project has been discontinued or has been abandoned. My concern, Madam Speaker, and, and this is a concern, a real concern for the Bangsa Moro and I wouldn't want us, the B A R M government, to be again a, a defendant in the Supreme Court when there will be, uh, somebody questioning this. My concern is that section forty-six A, paragraph A reopens this unconstitutional loophole. It allows savings from discontinuance or abandonment based on justifiable causes not attributable to the fault or negligence of the ministry, office or agency. Madam Speaker, before I continue, may I, uh, know what is the, uh, bill-specific technical definition of a justifiable cause? So the, the phrase in the, uh, in section forty-six A is "justifiable causes not attributable to the fault or negligence of the ministry, office or agency." What does the proponent mean when it comes to, uh, justifiable cause? Is there a specific technical definition of this?
Uh, Madam Speaker, during the, um, committee hearing on the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, there was a discussion as to its particular ma- meaning, meaning to say it is, um, forty-two events. Uh, but, uh, it was not reflected in, uh, the, the definitions, the definitions enumerated under the bill. So it is similar, justifiable cause, justifiable causes are, uh, those similar to what we call forty-two events, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, for example, Madam Speaker, um, if there is a ministry, an office or, or an agency, um, should, let's say they fail to conduct a procurement. There is a budget, it's in the B A A, but they fail to conduct the procurement. Can the ministry declare a, uh, quote-unquote failed bidding and have this be considered a justifiable cause to declare savings, Madam Speaker? If so, uh, yeah, please, please answer the question first.
Uh, Madam Speaker, uh, if the failure of the conduct of, uh, such bidding uh, was not due to forty-two events, then it is attributable to the fault or negligence of the M O A because of their, um, inefficiency. Then that, uh, will not fall within the definition of justifiable causes, Madam Speaker.
So, does the, does the sponsor not agree that, uh, this provision, uh, when it comes to just a, a general, there is just a term, justifiable cause with no specific definition, that it directly contradicts the Auronio, Auronio doctrine by allowing funds to be declared as savings due to, for example, uh, uh, well, it's not defined, although it was explained by the proponent that it's found in the, in the, uh, B A A, but it's not found here in this bill. Let's say, uh, due to implementation failure for not actual project completion. Uh, let's say there was a fortuitous event, there was a typhoon, uh, Tino, for example, and then, uh, the procurement was not, uh, no, there were not, there was a failed bidding. Can that now be a justification, uh, to declare that amount that was, that came from a failed bidding because of a fortuitous event be declared as savings? Would that be justifiable? Uh, that, that is a, that is a, uh, theoretical question, Madam Speaker, uh, because there is no definition of the term justifiable cause in the bill, Madam Speaker. Uh, the sponsor, uh, may answer.
Uh, Madam Speaker, um, I think, uh, a, uh, uh, meaningful examination of the aforementioned case would be up because if indeed, uh, even if, uh, there is a proper definition of justifiable causes, uh, and, but it would go against or be contrary to the, the, to, uh, that jurisprudence, then it would not, uh, the definition would not matter. So with that said, uh, Madam Speaker, may I, um, request for a two-minute suspension? For, uh, to me, for to allow me to examine.
Yes, two-minute suspension.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, um, to answer, um, the, the query of, uh, the Honorable Diaz Alamiya pertaining to, or referring to the, the case of, um, Arauloe versus Aquino. So what was, uh, declared unconstitutional was that the statutory definition of savings contained in, uh, GAAP, GAAP, the General Appropriations Act from twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve to twenty-thirteen was not, uh, complied with. And, uh, certain unobligated allotments from implementing agencies uh, and unreleased appropriations were declared as savings even prior to the end of the fiscal year without, again, complying with the definition of savings. So for paragraph A, I think it would be better, and I, I submit that we need to define justifiable causes, uh, just to make it specific, which or what is, or what can we consider as justifiable causes, Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you very much to the, uh, proponent. I will also be submitting, uh, proposed amendment to that so that we can define strictly what justifiable cause means. Now, uh, if, if I may continue, Madam Speaker, um, this, uh, what we call, uh, discretionary power that is consolidated in, uh, one entity, whether it's the executive or one ministry, actually brings me to section thirty-one, uh, Madam Speaker, the proponent, which pertains to prohibition against the increase of appropriations. Now, um, if we look at section thirty-one, it states that "The Parliament shall in no case increase the appropriation of any P A P of any M O A over the amount specified in the budget proposal of the Chief Minister." Should there be a need to reduce the proposed appropriation for a P A P, the corresponding reduction shall instead be made in the total appropriations of the M O A and shall be transferred to the contingent fund. I know this was, uh, the subject of questioning also yesterday by, uh, M P Nagib Sinarimbo with respect to, uh, contingent fund. However, Mister Speaker, Madam Speaker, sorry, this provision seems to attack the very heart of our power of the purse. The power of the purse is with the parliament. It states that Parliament shall in no case increase the appropriation for any item. And, and this strips us of the ability to realign funds towards urgent needs that we identify during deliberations. It's, it's not just one person identifying, it's the whole Committee on Finance, Budget and Management. It's the whole parliament of eighty people, um, uh, discussing and deliberating and, um, realigning funds towards urgent needs, those that are seen by the parliament to be urgent. But more alarmingly, uh, Madam Speaker, the second paragraph states that if Parliament does exercise its power to reduce a wasteful item, for example, the corresponding reduction is transferred to the contingent fund. As we know, the contingent fund under section twenty-nine is controlled by the Chief Minister. I, I have not seen this, uh, Madam Speaker, in, at the national level. If, um, if there are funds that are reduced because, uh, they are, uh, considered as a wasteful item, the, the reduction is not transferred to the contingent fund. In fact, in, in some cases, it goes to the unprogrammed fund. Now, um, in the B A R M, the contingent fund under section twenty-nine is controlled by the Chief Minister. So somehow, this creates a perverse heads, I win, tails, you lose system. So if we cut a wasteful project, the money does not go back to the general fund for this body, the parliament, again, to reallocate to hospitals or schools, for example. It goes directly back to the Chief Minister's discretionary control. I'm, I'm not referring to the current Chief Minister, no personalities here, uh, but we're referring in general to the Office of the Chief Minister of the B A R M, which will apply also in the future. My question for the sponsor is, how is this provision not a, uh, some kind of a rubber stamp mechanism? Does the sponsor not agree that this provision, as written, effectively mutters the, this parliament, the B A R M parliament, by making it impossible to meaningfully amend the budget? Or would, would the sponsor be open to, uh, deleting section thirty-one entirely? Or at a minimum, perhaps, amending it to ensure that any reductions made by the parliament are returned to the general fund for reapropriation by this body, Madam Speaker?
Uh, Madam Speaker, um, the, here in sponsor, uh, does not agree for the deletion of section thirty-one, but I agree that it should be amended and rewarded to apply or to, um, uh, to, uh, more, uh, directly address its, uh, purpose or reason. Uh, section thirty-one, uh, was placed in this, uh, bill uh, to reflect, uh, the constitutions, uh, the, the provision under the constitution under section, uh, twenty-five, uh, article six, that the Congress may not increase the appropriations recommended by the President for the operation of the government. So the Parliament shall in no case increase appropriations that must be the entire appropriations and not the P A P of any M O A, um, particularly. So, uh, I agree, uh, such as what, uh, what I did also. I agreed with, uh, the statement or the proposal of, uh, Honorable Nagib Sinarimbo that, uh, we must not limit the plenary powers of the Parliament to amend. that we must not limit the plenary powers of the parliament to amend and modify or change the items to allot it to a particular line item of the MOA and not be constrained solely by transferring it to the contingent fund. So there is a need to clarify that what is prevented here to be increased is not the PAPs of the MOAs, but rather the entire appropriations proposed by the minister as a whole and not that particular ministry, officer, agency. And there is, there must also be an amendment, partial amendment of this section 31 to reflect that it can be transferred to the contingent fund or to any line items that may be identified during the budgeting process, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would agree partially with that although we can try to improve the language on how it's going to be written. Because Madam Speaker, what the constitution allows is that, for example, at the national level, the constitution allows Congress to change the items within the budget, the PAP of the agencies. They can decrease one item and increase another item. So for example, we have seen it, they decreased one item, they decreased the confidential funds of the office of the Vice President, and then they increased another item. They used those funds that they took out from the OVP confidential funds and placed that in the PGH hospital budget, for example. So they can do that as long as the total budget of the government does not increase. This is the very essence, Madam Speaker, of the power of the purse. And but under section 31 of PB number 235, it strips the parliament of this power if we retain it as it is. It states that parliament shall in no case increase the appropriation of any PAP. So if we want to increase, for example, the budget for, let's say, the budget for the Mataris education or we'd like to increase the budget for the Barangay Health Centers or the rural health units, we cannot do so even if it finds, for example, savings by cutting, let's say, representation expenses in another office. So I would be submitting proposed amendments to this section, Madam Speaker, not to limit the power of the purse of the parliament and just, for example, have it transferred to the contingent fund, but it should, the parliament should be able to transfer that any amount that is reduced from one PAP or one ministry or one agency, the parliament should have the authority to transfer that to increase the budget of another ministry or another PAP, Madam Speaker. I'll be submitting at the proper time. And my second to the last line of questioning, Madam Speaker, on cash budgeting and the systemic law utilization, the very low BUR of the BARM. We must first acknowledge, Madam Speaker, that we have a problem. We have to acknowledge that we have a problem. We have seen senators call out BARM's unspent funds. We've seen that in the news. And we in this very parliament are forced, year after year, to pass legislation extending the validity of our annual appropriation acts. So every year, we pass the Bangsa Moro Appropriations Act and then at the same time, we also pass legislation extending the validity of our annual appropriation acts of the prior years. This is a very clear symptom, Madam Speaker, of a deep problem in budget execution. My question is, is legislating a cash budgeting system by itself the solution like this law? Am I correct to assume the MFBM is already striving to implement these principles even without this law, Madam Speaker? May I know, in other words, I would like to know from the proponent, what are the current blockages that this law will definitively fix? I'm sure currently, the Ministry of Finance, Budget and Management is already striving to increase the BUR, to implement all of those principles that we have on cash budgeting system. But still, we have a very huge percentage of unspent funds. Now, with the passage of this law, Madam Speaker, what problems, what gaps, what blockages will this law will definitively fix, Madam Speaker? And just to let the parliament know, I am for cash budgeting, Madam Speaker, because it forces discipline. But I would like to be clarified, when this law was drafted, what were we thinking? What are the current blockages that this law would definitely fix, Madam Speaker?
Madam Speaker, thank you for the question of DS Alamiya, but also the answer. As she had stated that it will force discipline because only shovel-ready or implementation-ready program, activities and projects are accepted as part or approved in their budget proposal. And second, should this shovel-ready or implementation-ready PAPs be not implemented within one year, then the funds appropriated for this will then be reverted back to the general fund. The blockages here, it will be, would be the adjustment of the individual ministries, offices or agencies. But then again, we must enforce discipline to have a good financial management system, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you the proponent for acknowledging that. So it appears, Madam Speaker, that yes, cash budgeting forces discipline. But I would like to say that the success of this law and the system of cash budgeting would depend entirely on section 77, if I may refer the proponent to that section, the transitory plan that's mentioned there. My concern is that this plan will be created after the law is passed. The plan is not here, and that's why I asked the question when I said that the assumption is that the MFBM already has already been striving very hard to implement the principles of a cash budgeting system. So but the plan under section 77, the transitory plan, will be created after the law is passed and it may not contain the actionable items that our MOAs need. We don't just need a plan, we need an intervention, Madam Chair. How can we then in this bill, through this bill, ensure that the transitory plan in section 77 is not just a document, but it is a robust program that will be implemented strictly? So for example, would the sponsor be open to an amendment mandating that the plan must include ministry-by-ministry readiness assessments and capacity building targets? So that means we expand section 77 and not just say that the plan will be drafted or will be created after the law is passed, but we will put some rubrics or some metrics in the transitory plan. So like, for example, readiness assessments per ministry, per MOA and capacity building targets and other items to including that. Including also an amendment that would require the MFBM to submit, for example, because this is not found here, to submit quarterly progress reports on the transitory plan to the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management in the parliament so that we can jointly monitor the transition and hold the agencies accountable during the three-year period. Not just after the three-year period, but during. We have to make sure that we are able to make sure that the agencies are held accountable. Would the proponent be willing to, for an amendment of section 77 to include some rubrics or indicators of success to make it a robust discipline program, ministry-by-ministry, readiness assessments, capacity building targets, as well as quarterly progress reports to the committee headed by the proponent? The committee quarterly progress reports on the transitory plan, Madam Speaker?
Madam Speaker, the herein representation would welcome an amendment, but I would suggest for this representation, the opinion of, my opinion would be that such provisions should be permissive in order to give discretion to the Ministry of Finance, Budget and Management on what particular meter stick or requirements that may be stated in their guidelines. As with respect to the implementation of the cash budgeting system that would promote it because what is mandated, mandated after this act that it should be implemented within a period of three years from the enactment. So there will be a period of transition before we fully apply the cash budgeting system, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, thank you to the proponent. And my last question with respect to the transparency and participation, that's Title VI and Title V on accountability. I would like to state for the record that section 67 is a very good provision, Madam Speaker. However, as we know, compliance is a major issue here in BARM. While we have this very good provision on transparency, but the problem is compliance. And to be candid about this, in my years here in the BTA, I have failed to see complete reports on our agencies' websites. Really, I have not seen siguro ilan lang. So without this regional law, Madam Speaker, am I correct that the MFBM is the primary enforcing body for the transparency seal? Can the sponsor appraise this body on the current compliance rate of our MOAs? Madam Speaker?
Madam Speaker, I think it is of public knowledge and I agree with the interpreter, Honorable DS Alamiya, that there are some ministries, offices and agency which are not complying with, at the very least, the posting of information that should be made available to the public. That is why we made it clear here under section 67 that it is, so that it can be a mandate of each of the minister or head of office for ensuring compliance with the transparency seal and people, the right of the people to access to public financial information, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and to the sponsor. I think this is a very promising step, Madam Speaker. At the national level, we know that the General Appropriations Act links compliance to the performance-based bonus. There's a PBB, and we know that PBB is not practiced in BARM. Now, if we really want compliance by the MOAs to the transparency seal provision, I would like to know if the sponsor would be willing to adding this kind of link or, yes, a similar to the PBB or providing for specific administrative sanctions in the bill if the head of agency fails to comply? So for example, I think in this bill, there is under section 74, under section 74, which provides for suspension of salary when the MOAs, the ministries fail to submit reports, then the salaries may be suspended. This is provided in under section 74. Would the sponsor be willing to extend the same penalty to agencies and their heads of agencies and sanction them if they fail to comply with the transparency seal requirement? And/or would the sponsor be also open to providing some kind of an incentive-based, performance-based bonus based on the performance of the ministry and the staff?
For the first recommendation regarding the inclusion of the sanction for non-inclusion or non-compliance with the transparency seal, I think it forms part of the submission of the reports. Meaning to say, the reports will only be considered submitted or accepted if it contains a transparency seal. But should the Honorable DS Alamiya, Madam Speaker, propose or recommends a more specific wording or language to include specifically the compliance with the transparency seal, then the herein representation or sponsor welcomes it. As to the incentive, I think that should be contained in another law and not with respect to the this particular bill, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the sponsor. I also agree that the parliament may pass another law based on the recommendation of the MFBM with respect to a performance-based kind of incentive in the BARM. And finally, my question, my last question, Madam Speaker, is about people's participation, and that's under section 69, which states that the government shall establish and implement suitable participatory budget mechanisms. However, well, this is a good provision, Madam Speaker, but it seems to be a hanging provision because it merely restates a principle without the how. How do we do this? How do we make the people participate? Make sure that they are part of the budget mechanisms in a participatory budget mechanism? If we are serious about reform, let us include specific mechanisms, even if it's not detailed but specific enough to provide the some kind of, again, I don't want to use the term rubrics, but some kind of guidelines on how the people's participation in the budget mechanisms would be implemented. Would the sponsor be open to an amendment requiring, for example, accredited CSO observers at the ministry-level budget preparation meetings or opening the cabinet's budget preparation meetings to LG representatives, civil society organizations, so that we can give this provision a real meaning? It will not be a dead letter provision, but a provision that is alive and that will be implemented once we pass this law?
Madam Speaker, during the stage of budget preparation, there is a stakeholder engagement which invites the people to participate in the budgeting process. However, should the Honorable DS Alamiya, Madam Speaker, recommend, we can also place it under section 77 as part of the implementing guidelines, Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the proponent, Madam Speaker, my colleagues in the parliament. I'm ready to support this bill, Mr. Sponsor, congratulations. But only if we can ensure that it is a gin-wine, reform-enriched law that is constitutional, that's very important for me, so that we will no longer be questioned in the Supreme Court. A bill, a law that guarantees true accountability and which empowers the parliament as their representative of the Bangsa Moro people. Thank you very much, Mr. Proponent, and to the speaker. Assalamualaikum wrakmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, thank you, Honorable DS Alamiya.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker Alamiya.
Next, madam speaker, next to interpolate is uh floor leader John Anthony Lim. Um I move that we recognize him.
The floor leader is recognized. You may proceed.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Salamualaikum wrakmatulayi wabarakaatuh. Uh will the good sponsor yield to some clarificatory, if not uh interpolation, sir?
Yes, madam speaker.
I have but a few, but before that, I'd like to manifest, no, uh listening to the interpolation since yesterday is somewhat a classroom discussions, no? Especially for me who is really not familiar with the the budgeting system. That's why I was intently, I am intently listening to the exchanges starting yesterday and uh uh this afternoon with the interpolator, our uh teacher, professor, DS Attorney Liza Alamiya, and also the proponent is also a teacher himself. But I have uh some uh few questions and interpolation. And I will start first with the people's participation, sir?
Yes, madam speaker.
Uh yes, earlier uh in the interpolation by Jambo, uh Michael Matalang, he mentioned about blockchain and uh the Honorable Deputy Speaker Attorney Liza Alamiya Ala- Liza Alamiya also uh uh made a question about how do we concretize this if I'm not mistaken, no? Would would the proponent uh uh be willing to or agree with me that that blockchain could be a form of this uh uh concretizing this particular provision of the bill?
Yes, uh I agree, madam speaker, that blockchain can be a medium or a system that we can uh concretize uh the transparency. As again, as I've mentioned before, blockchain ensures that there is no modification as to what is uh stated in a particular data because it ensures that uh all datas in all systems or storages are the same, preventing or making the records immutable. However, uh with respect to it, if being contained or being required in this uh particular bill, a further study must be required. And also, I think the adoption of that system would require further funding, which uh that uh particular um system should uh be contained in a another bill, uh madam speaker?
Uh thank you for that uh answer, at least, no? The the I think I suppose that MP Jambo, the Honorable Matalang, will also be providing an amendment, no? Just to to uh make uh make uh particular mention on blockchain or at least the openness of this uh budget system to that a particular um um uh improvement or uh in people's partici- participation. Now I move uh to section twenty-six. And this is uh medyo maboboring ho kayo, this is more procedural. Baka I will be remiss in my duty as a floor leader, no? Section twenty-six?
Yes, madam speaker.
I invite the uh proponent to section twenty-six?
Yes, uh madam speaker, uh honorable uh floor leader?
Yes, that uh section twenty-six speaks of schedule of budget consideration. The parliament shall prioritize the consideration and enactment of GAB and the corresponding revenue bill, if any. This is uh the second paragraph. The GAB shall be filed and calendared for first reading within five calendar days from budget submission. And as far as practicable, within five days, within five calendar days after the first reading, the parliament shall start discussion on said bill on the second reading. Um ju- just before I do go to my question, just a pop uh just put putting some context, no? In our current procedure now, we do the first reading, we do the second reading and af- immediately after the second reading, we refer it to the committee. There is no debate yet as of this moment. Uh am I correct in my understanding uh that uh this revises our procedure particularly on budget bills? Uh that's my question, uh Honorable Presiding Officer?
Yeah, yeah, yes, uh madam speaker. The the provision or the uh particular provision is as far as practicable, within five calendar days after the fir- first reading, the parliament start this shall start discussion on said bill on the second reading is not uh in accordance with the parliamentary rules. Um however, uh I think this is not the intent of the bill itself and we would welcome a uh amendment uh to this uh uh to section twenty-six to reflect our parliamentary rules and the proc- uh of a procedure. What is uh the intent here was that the requirement of five calendar days that it should be um uh acted upon uh immediately after the sub- five days after the submission of the uh GAB or the General Appropriations Bill on the Bangsa Moro to prevent uh delays and to ensure uh are there to prevent uh a reenacted budget and to ensure that uh the uh General Appropriations Bill on the Bangsa Moro will be discussed thoroughly, uh madam speaker?
Uh thank you. Marami salamat po, at least, no? I will be in due time. We will be submitting for consideration of the proponent. Just uh 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 suggestion for amendment, no? So they can also consider just to align yung procedure natin sa or to clarify or make it clear uh uh sa rules natin. At least, uh now that I know that this is not in a different procedure that we're taking here, no? So, thank you, sir proponent. Now I proceed to my next uh subject of interpolation, which is the uh the subject uh also tackled by DS Attorney Liza Alamiya. But I hope me, nakuhan niya na ata lahat, but I will ask some questions. Eh with this, I will be adapting the same interpolations for madam speaker and then uh in due time, make also some recommendations for amendment to better the bill. If uh I don't, the bill is good, not just so as an uh suggested amendment. So section fifty-five?
Yes, uh madam speaker, Honorable Floor Leader?
Scrolling pa lang po ako, mabagal sa.
Uh I just would like to uh manifest also, madam speaker, that uh uh we welcome and we very much appreciate the interpolators, our fellow members of parliament, uh because we need your help to craft a bill that is first constitutional, like what uh DS Alamiya stated, that uh we should ensure that it is in accordance with the foundational law. And second, that it will address uh the um ills or obstacles that this bill intends to address. So uh okay lang po, uh floor leader?
Thank you, sir. Para tayo nasa law school dito, actually. And then you two are the teachers. Ako talaga zero zero knowledge of budgeting po. Uh I ask the indulgence of our uh proponent and the the honorable honorable MPs if my questions uh will seem naive or very very elementary, no? My apologies to everyone. So I proceed na po. Uh in the section fifty-five, uh the BT- it says that the BTO may invest portions of the funds in the STA for such periods at as it may deem prudent, considering cash management require requirements, so on and so 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 forth. Uh you you mentioned about the uh constitut- the constitutionality, no? And uh and then I'm reminded of this uh two prin- the principle of undue delegation. And there are tests to this, no? Is one is uh completeness test and sufficient standard test. Uh would the proponent uh uh be willing to answer or manifest if uh this uh particular paragraph of the bill uh qualifies under uh pass these two tests of completeness and uh sufficient test?
Uh section fifty-five was uh complemented by section ten of the General Appropriations Bill. But this uh the validity of section fifty-five for it to be able to pass the completeness test and sufficiency of standard test uh would uh presuppose the adoption of uh section ten of the General Appropriations Bill in twenty-twenty-five. So again, uh uh I if I may repeat, um I agree that it should be reflected here uh under section se- section fifty-five, uh madam speaker?
Asas- sa tama po, at least the 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 proponent is open, at least we can put a parameter, ho? Parameter, because the general rule is the power of the purse uh is with the parliament, right? And there are except uh exceptions to delegation, there are valid legit- uh delegations, they're also called undue delegations. And that's why uh we have to comply with this test. And I'm happy that the the proponent is willing to listen or at least review whatever possible um uh amendment to the bill can uh that can be uh preferred uh by this representation or by the other uh MPs who have made their interpolations. Uh thank you, sir, for that, sir. Uh i- iung iung danger ho kasi ng uh deem prudent, no? Is uh uh I think uh uh natima or contrary to the yung concept ng na-mention din ata ni yung accountability. Because later on, pagalimbawa, if uh if the investment fails, the defense of the person who is entrusted with that investment is eh within the given uh uh yung sa perspective ko at the time I made or decided to invest, itong ganito. So I, at that time, I deem it prudent that ito ang gagawin. So magiging defense on later on, ho ito, sa account of uh yung sa concept ng accountability. Uh tama ho ba ako sa pagkakaintindi ko? In my little uh knowledge of this uh subject?
Yes, madam speaker. Uh in fact, section fifty-five lacks for it to be to pass the completeness test to define what are these funds held in uh the STA. So again, uh there was a definition under section ten uh that these are idle funds. But then again, to 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 have uh section fifty-five uh comply with the requirements of uh the completeness test and the sufficiency of standard test, then this must be rec- reflected in this particular provision and not be dependent upon the enactment of section ten of the General Appropriations of the Bangsa Moro. Uh madam speaker, uh uh the interpolator, Honorable uh floor leader Jet Lim is correct po?
Thank you, sir. Would it also be uh correct or prudent for us uh to put a parameter to make a le- a negative list or an exclusion uh which particular investment cannot be uh invested on?
This would uh be with with constrain the ability of uh the Bureau of the Treasury. What are this Sharia Sharia compliant investments or investments that may be allowed? But uh again, uh the Ministry of Finance, Budget and Management uh can issue the guidelines which would reflect what are the allowable investments here? Um if we put it into law, then there may be other investments that can be available, but which is Sharia compliant, but we cannot invest because it is not among those uh and you're and if we make an enumeration, uh those enumerated, we may be um uh violating the um the principle uh exclusio unus ex exclusio alterius, that if there is enumeration, it exclude all others. So I think uh there uh the suggestion of enumerating which investments are allowed, negative list and a positive list, would uh uh be uh adverse to the ability of the Bureau of the Treasury in in investing, uh madam speaker?
No, thank you, uh thank you, honorable proponent, Honorable Presiding Officer. I'm really actually uh moving towards yung sa negative list, no? Just to put up a parameter, medyo konti lang namano yon. As opposed to uh enumerating the what can be allowed, which is medyo, I think, will uh hamper the the purpose of of this particular investment, uh a particular provision. But uh thank you also for that uh openness, no? To the suggestion, uh que- another question, on the same.
Uh to add, uh madam speaker, uh apologize, uh uh Honorable Floor Leader Jet Lim. Uh in fact, under paragraph A, second, the second paragraph, that uh it states there that the Ministry of Finance and Budget and Management shall establish the criteria for evaluating and selecting Sharia compliant investments, considering uh their adherence to Islamic finance finance principles and the maximiz- maximization of returns on the investment of uh Bangsa Moro funds. Uh madam speaker?
Uh thank you. Is is there a benchmark or a good practice where we can refer to when we uh we make when uh government uh invest portion of the funds? What is the uh good practice around the world when they invest portion of the funds as mentioned in section fifty-five?
Um wha- with with respect to that, um the uh there there's there were there were several meetings regarding uh by the Bureau of the Treasury, particularly uh the Bangsa Moro Treasurer uh regarding Sharia compliant investments. Um this, the good practices, of course, would be part of the consideration in establishing the criteria for evaluating and selecting Sharia compliant investment, uh floor leader? Uh madam speaker?
Uh my question is actually, in other jurisdictions, for instance, how much of the funds they invest? Wala bang ganun, no? Like, they can only uh invest so much or maybe fifty percent or thirty percent? Wala bang uh general rule or ballpark figure on that?
I I I think what was the primary consideration in uh section fifty-five is not the percentage of the entirety of the uh funds because we think it is limited into uh what can be invested, which are the idle funds that may vary from year to year. Or in in fact, there may be some instances that uh the idle funds may be uh considered for investment uh very later in the year. So the it 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 will vary the the amount of that particular fund. So there's no particular percentage uh that uh could be invested, uh madam speaker?
Thank you, honorable proponent. In the same manner, in the same line of questioning, no? It mentions of such periods also in other jurisdiction or the national, ilimbawa, or elsewhere, no? The uh 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 other uh government. Uh what is the acceptable period? This is uh three months, six months, or do they exceed one year? Meron ho bang ganun?
Uh there are several uh Sharia compliant investments. So uh such as when when we purchase, no? When we purchase a uh particular wait, uh a moment, uh madam speaker, may I request one minute's suspension?
One minute's suspension. Session resumes.
Thank you, thank you, madam speaker. Uh to answer the query of the the Honorable uh Floor Leader, madam speaker, of uh uh Honorable Jet Lim, there is no uh particular uh length or period of uh the investment and will vary uh from time to time. And uh to make it clear, the investment stated here is not for revenue generation, but for good cash management, uh to uh good cash management practice to prevent value erosion. Madam speaker?
Tama. I I wonder dito sa enumeration, which is uh enumeration, section fifty-five, sub letter I to letter three? Um hindi ko, saan po papasok dito mga T-bills or mga notes na mga ganun, no?
Uh the Treasury Bance, Madam, uh sir?
Mga Treasury Bills, saan siya papasok dito?
This is under uh sovereign issued securities, Treasury Bills.
Tago. Okay, so sir, uh we can invest in this particular bill, we can invest a sovereign issue, meaning not only the Philippines but other sovereigns like mga US T Bills, ano ho? Tama?
That is a uh generally worded, so uh the intention of the bill may uh it it can allow us to uh invest in other sovereign issues.
Opo. I I guess that would be the my last question, but I take this opportunity to thank the the sponsor, the proponent, no, and uh his team and other co-sponsors for for preparing this particular piece of legislation. Uh I I am also manifesting my support and hope to submit a uh an amendment or proposal for consideration of the proponent. Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer, and thank you, Proponent Sir.
Um thank you, uh Honorable Floor Leader Jet Lim. Uh I extend my appreciation to the Honorable uh Presiding Officer. Madam Speaker, thank you very much and to the Deputy Floor Leader. There is there, ma?
Ah, Madam Speaker, there are three more. Sorry. Yung magandang topic kasi eh.
Thank you, Deputy uh Floor Leader, John Antonio Lim. Uh Madam Speaker, uh there are three more MPs who wishes to interpolate. Uh next to interpolate, Madam Speaker, is Deputy Floor Leader MP Russell Mitmog, uh Junior. Uh I move that we we recognize him.
Deputy Floor Leader Mitmog, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, uh sir Floor Leader, may mga konting katanungan lang po. Uh unang-unang po dun sa mga documents. Sa section twenty-four po, uh sinabi yung budget natin as to be provided by the Chief Minister. Uh nilagay dun yung mga type ng uh documents ay bibibigay. Ang question ko po, uh kasama ba dun sa mga documents yung COA report? Et kung kasama din ba dun sa mga documents yung uh other sources of funds? Ibig sabihin, uh normally kasi nakikita natin sa budget natin is yung SDF, uh black grant, pati yung local fund. Pero dito po sa BARM, madami pong nagpupondo, uh yung national, nagpupondo din po ng mga programa, uh mas kina meron ng black grant. Yung internationals, nagpupondo din po. Then yung mga partners, uh yung mga uh partners ng mga uh kuwan natin ministries nagp- uh nagpupondo din po. So yun po yung uh katanungan ko po, sir.
Uh Madam Speaker, uh the uh inclusion or um whether or not, the question whether or not COA reports and source of uh funding uh is included in uh the enumeration under section twenty-four. Uh no, those uh reports are not included in under section twenty-four. It's just the Bangsa Moro.
Madam Speaker. Uh naiks ko lang po tanungin kung uh makakasira po ba sa batas or makakatulong kung idagdag po natin to. Dahil kung pwede po, uh i- uh magre-reserve po ako for amendments, Madam Speaker.
Uh section twenty-four is contained under title one, or rather, title three, chapter one, which is budget preparation. And at that stage of budget preparation, what is submitted is are those enumerated, yung Chief Minister's budget message, Bangsa Moro expenditure program, and uh budget of expenditure and sources of uh financing. To see the source uh is uh uh submitted along with the expenditure program, but the uh COA reports are not. Uh the COA reports are part of the budget accountability stage uh which is the last part of the budgeting process, uh Madam Speaker.
Okay, salamat po, Madam Speaker. Uh yun lang po, Madam Speaker, I will be reserving uh my rights to do some amendments kasi uh sa tingin ko po, pag na sa kuwan na parliament na to, uh yun po yung mga document na makakatulong sa atin to assess kung yung uh ministry ay uh tama yung ginagawa niya at kung yung ministry ba ay sumusunod sa ginagawa na uh sa mga tinas natin sa kanya. At saka po, uh yung others' courses of fund po, Madam Speaker, is very important for me kasi uh minsan may mga programs, may budget na din po sa national. Yung sunod ko po, nakatanungan Madam Speaker is in relation to to section sixty-three. Uh ang nakalagay po kasi, yung pinaka-porsion lang ng bandang babae, yung naiks kong tanong. Uh pag sinabi po parliament, uh sino po sa parliament? Uh yung buo tayo? Or minsan kasi napapadala yung dokumento sa speaker then uh depende po sa speaker kung binibigay ito sa sa committees or sa lahat? Or dapat i-open po natin na very kuwan na direct? Pag nilagay parliament, ibig sabihin, ito yung mga committees or mga officers na dapat may copy nung pinadala sa parliamento?
Uh the herein uh sponsor is of the opinion that when we say parliament, uh it means all members of the parliament as uh the power of the purse and uh uh is uh resides in the entire parliament and not to any particular individual, officers, or uh committee, uh Madam Speaker.
Oo, tama po. Under section sixty-three, pag sinabi parliament, uh hindi lamang po yung speaker ang makakatanggap, hindi lamang po yung direct na committee. Kundi every individual parliamentarian is makakatanggap po ng dokumento?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay, salamat po. Then uh ganun din po, yung sa section sixty-nine, uh meron la akong katanungan, pag sinabi valid na claim, kasi ito yung accounts payable, no? Valid claim sufficient in evidence, uh at saka propriety ng authority. Uh sino po magbibigay ng guidelines, yung MFBM po ba? Kasi medyo, alam naman natin, dapat valid yung claim. Uh ano yung specific guidelines para dito, pati dun sa proper authority?
This is uh my my, section fifty-nine, sir?
Sixty-nine po, sixty-nine, yung sa uh kwampo uh accounts payable.
People's participation in the budget process. Sixty-nine, section sixty-nine?
Yes po. Accounts payable, or baka yan yung old law, pero in relation to accounts payable po.
Well, the question, uh may I uh I apologize, but the question was pertaining to accounts payable, who will uh may may may.
Uh determine yung valid claim sufficient in evidence, pati yung proper authority?
Um Madam Speaker, may I request for one one minute suspension?
One minute suspension.
Thank you. Uh so, under uh section uh priorly, uh it was section sixty-nine and now section seventy, uh the MOA will certify, uh and it will be the chief accountant.
Chief accountant, okay.
Yes, uh Madam Speaker.
Thank you. So following ang rules po na fina-follow nila will be yung sa COA rules po or magsasubmit or magbibigay ng guidelines dito yung ating MFBM. You actually, yun yung mas katanungan ko dito sa section seventy.
The enforcement, title seven, section seventy, will issue, uh will be issued, the implementing the implementing guidelines will likewise be issued by the MFBM, but of uh uh the I am of the opinion that the their guidelines will be uh in consonance with the the COA guidelines. Uh Madam Speaker.
Okay, sige. Thank you, thank you. And yung last po nakakanungan, sir, is dati seventy-three ito, pero ngayon seventy-four na po, yung failure to submit reports. Uh yun din po, yung uh last paragraph, sinabi dito is the parliament uh motoproprio. So ibig sabihin, isang single entity, motoproprio, upon the request of COA or the Finance Minister and the Budget Management, compel the head of non-compliant MOA uh under the pain of contempt to produce the required reports, to explain reasons for failure, to submit and disclose the said reports. Uh sa tingin ko, in relation po dito, dahil yung yung kuwan no, yung failure to submit report is sa MFBM naman. Dapat yung may jurisdiction lata that dapat dito is yung sa last paragraph, is the Chief Minister. Kasi ibabalik niya pa sa parliament, eh tapos na dun sa level natin. Uh natapos na yung budget, nabigay na yung documents sa kanila. Tapos during sa status ito ng pag uh re-request ng reports sa mga agency, so executive po yung uh process. Pero nakalagay dito, it's the parliament who may motoproprio or upon the request of the COA or the ministry. Then sinabi din natin kanina, the parliament, every every MPs. So yun yung question ko dito, kung sino yung, kung the parliament, sino yung lalapitan ni Ministry of Finance? Or can it can be raised during the plenary? At saka, kung kung kuwan naman, kung i-check natin dahil nasa executive na si Minister of Finance, dapat si Chief Minister na itong nandito?
Uh I ag- I agree that uh when it uh pertains to the executive, that uh it should not be limited to the Ministry of Finance, but could include uh the Chief Minister, but uh not excluding the Ministry of Finance Budget and Management. And well, when we say the parliament, in this particular provision, the parliament should mean uh the particular committee having jurisdiction of uh the particular issue, uh Madam Speaker.
Uh so ibig sabihin, uh for clarity lang, in relation dito, yung the parliament in under section seventy-four is yung parliament na may hawak kung sino yung ministry ang hindi nagbigay? Or under what ministry po siya?
Uh we- depending upon the particular issue, uh compel the head of the non-compliant MOA. Uh it can be when then the that particular uh matter or uh issue is referred to, let's say, the Blue Ribbon Committee, or when it is already in the stage of the budget legis- legislation process, then that particular committee as authorized by the parliament can motoproprio request uh the 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 documents to submit and disclose the the reports, such as what we are doing now in the uh Committee on Finance Budget and Management. We are requiring them to submit uh the the COA reports, uh Madam Speaker.
Okay, salamat po. Yun lang po yung mga katanungan ko, sir, for clarity. Uh salamat po, yun lang po.
Thank you, De- uh Deputy Deputy Floor Leader Russell Mitmog. Madam Speaker, next to interpolate is Deputy Speaker Ishak Mastura. Uh I move that we recognize him.
Deputy Speaker is recognized. Please proceed.
Salam alaykum rakhmatullahi wakatuhu. Uh thank you very much for the recognition of my interpolation. Uh without much further ado, because we lack time already, um I'd like to propound some questions, answerable by yes or no, but can also be explained by the proponent. Um first of all, I would like to say that I am one of the uh movers in terms of having this bill passed because uh I've been asking that a bill of this kind be passed for the longest time. In fact, I believe that this bill should have been passed in the very first parliament or the first first uh Bangsa Moro Transition Authority. Uh because um the importance of this bill is uh first of all, it with regard to the calendar, the the timetable for passing the budget. So uh I would like to ask the proponent, uh do you agree that the autonomous region is enough, is a form of LGU?
When we were at the Department of Bud- uh Department of Budget and Management, we treated that the autonomous region is a hybrid of uh an uh an LGU as well as uh uh pertaining certain aspects to a GOC. Uh Madam Speaker.
Okay, uh just to point out that uh the case or the decision in the case of Abaskida versus Senate uh categorically classified uh the autonomous regions as a form of LGU. Uh but of course, um through practice, as as we have witnessed, it's really more of both an administrative body, like an administrative region, as well as a form of local government. So um my next question would be, do you agree that the Bangsa Moro Treasury Office should have a measure of independence?
Yeah, yes, Madam Speaker, I agree.
Do you do you think that our current Bangsa Moro Treasury Office is uh uh independent and under uh Ministry of Finance Budget and Management? Or uh do we really need to have a separate law just for the Bangsa Moro Treasury Office as provided in the uh Bangsa Moro Organic Law?
Uh as it stands, the Bangsa Moro Treasury Office uh functions as it should be. And uh it has a certain amount of independence from the Ministry of Finance Budget and Management. Uh and I uh I uh I do not agree that for the Bangsa Moro Treasury Office to dispense or to comply uh or to fulfill its uh uh functions, duties, and responsibilities that there is a uh law needed, uh Madam Speaker.
But of course, you're aware that under the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, that the Bangsa Moro Treasury Office is created by the Bangsa Moro Organic Law uh whose and whose primary function is to receive safeguarded all the revenues generated and collected by the Bangsa Moro government. So actually, it even precedes the ministries. It was created in a separate section or provision.
Yes, I agree, Madam Speaker.
So uh the other question is on 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 with regard to the budget system, uh under the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, the form, content, and manner of preparation of the Bangsa Moro budget shall be prescribed by law enacted by parliament. Is this the law that uh actually responds to this provision of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law?
Yes, Madam Speaker. This will guide the the parliament uh as to the form, content, and manner of uh submission and enactment.
Uh the more compelling question would be, uh it says here, consistent with existing laws, rules, and regulations of the national government. For this purpose, the bank, the parliament shall create the Bangsa Moro Budget Office. So do you think that uh this law is consistent with existing laws, rules, and regulations of the national government? What have, what has your committee done in terms of making sure that it is compliant with uh existing laws, rules, and regulations of the national government?
Uh when, during the drafting of this uh bill and upon examination in the Committee on Finance Budget and Management, uh we uh uh the the source of the provisions, uh in fact, a majority of this uh the provisions here are from the uh budget circulars issued by the national government and uh other rules and regulations pertaining to uh uh finance or budget management. So uh uh th- those are the measures we obs- uh we we just this is codification of all those uh particular circulars and uh rules and regulations pertaining to the budget, uh Madam Speaker.
So you you are confident that will this will stand the test of scrutiny in case that our budget system is questioned before the courts?
Uh with 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 the the help of the body, such as right now, we have observed that certain provisions are not uh compliant, such as section thirty-one pertaining to the uh uh the no increase in the appropriations of any PAP of or any MOA. So af- uh inshallah, after the amendments, uh I can confidently say that it uh can stand uh the uh scrutiny, judicial scrutiny of uh any anybody. Madam Speaker.
So in this uh section of the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, that it says also the parliament shall create the Bangsa Moro Budget Office. Does this law create the Bangsa Moro Budget Office?
For the creation of a particular uh budget office or particular office, it may not be germane or con- or part of the subject of this uh bill. And we avoided to include any uh uh any provisions here that will require funding uh for its uh operation. It only pertains to the process or to the system of how the budget is enactment uh enacted, uh particularly all the stages of the budgeting process, the budget preparation, the budget legislation execution, and uh budget accountability or report, Madam Speaker.
In any case, uh is there, to your knowledge, is there any In any case, ah, is there, to your knowledge, is there any ah law creating this budget office in the parliament?
There is ah, similar to the Bangsa Moro Treasury Office, under BAH thirteen, it created ah the BBO, the Bangsa Moro Budget Office, Madam Speaker.
Thank you for that, ah Mister Proponent, Madam Speaker. And next is, ah, it says in the Bangsa Moro Organic Law that ah in the allocation of the black grant, the national laws and budgeting rules and regulations implemented by the DBM and the Department of Interior and Local Government ah units shall apply. So, did you revisit or revisit or, or do you, do your due diligence with regard to ah the budgeting rules and regulations that are being implemented by the DBM, including the DILG?
Yes, ah, Madam Speaker.
You answered before that you, you looked at the budget circulars and ah the, the memorandums coming from the DBM, but did you do this as well with the DILG? Can you categorically say that ah you also look at the budget circulars or the joint budget circulars that were issued by the DBM and the DILG?
Yes, the, the joint circulars issued by the D- ah DBM, DILG, ah, the DBM, ah Department of Finance, and ah the joint circulars of those three departments were particularly examined ah to ah, ah, to be incorporated ah in this bill ah when compatible, ah Madam Speaker.
So, going to specific provisions of the law, ah, it says here in section twenty-three, the proposed Bangsa Moro Budget, the Chief Minister shall submit the proposed Bangsa Moro Bu- Budget to the parliament as far as practicable, not later than the thirtieth of September of each year. Why did you put there "as far as practicable"? Ah, as you know, we have had problems with this term "as far as practicable" during our discussions, for example, on ah the districting bill, that there is that ah categorization "as far as practicable". If you, if you notice Mister, Madam Speaker, ah in, in the constitution, the, the submission of the budget of, of the Philippine Government ah is within thirty days after the State of the Nation Address. So, it's very specific. It's time-bound. So, why did you put here "as far as practicable"? It, it seems to be an evasion of responsibility on the part of the ones preparing the budget when you put this kind of qualifier. And besides, what, what, what compelled you to ah determine the date as the thirtieth of September of, ah, of, of each year, when there could be any other date?
Ah, as to the first question regarding "as far as practi- practicable", no, it is not an evasion of the responsibility of ah those who are preparing the budget, but rather, there is a distinction between the national government in terms of their budget preparation as well as the regional government. Firstly, ah the regional government is dependent upon the information and ah the ah enactment of the ah GA regarding its annual black grant. So, we are constrained ah to wait for ah the, the um official ah information regarding what is the amount of the annual black grant. Second, ah as to the question of um, ah
The, the date, the date?
Ah, yeah, the date, the date. The date is historical ah practice, ah Madam, Madam Speaker. But should the ah, ah, the, the Honorable Deputy Speaker Ishak Mastura ah propose a, a date ah that would ah ah have a sufficient basis why we set this date, then we would be amenable for any amendment, insya Allah.
Thank you for that because as you no- no- noticed, we have a hundred fourteen billion budget this year, ah for next year. And ah we are asking the parliament to consider it just for three months and then right into the, the period of the break on, on December. As you know, ah, we still follow the, the Gregorian calendar and on December, that's where the school break is. And ah, and yet, ah, we, we would still be working to finish the budget. So, ah, I think it's more practical to have an earlier date and a more definite date because ah thi- this will allow a lot of room for, you know, ah, ah ah bargaining and ah, ah
Scrutiny.
scrutiny as well as ah the, 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 the parliament can also exercise some oversight ah if we have more time for the parliament. I'm not saying that we follow the same rule as the Congress because they have a much bigger budget, but at least we have a definite date. Ah, but I'll try to look into ah a more suitable or ah, as you said, more justifiable date ah rather than having an arbitrary date. Ah, but to my knowledge, I think they are also using the September thirtieth because ah if not mistaken, ah Mister Proponent, the, the deadline for local government units or ordinances on September thirtieth, is that correct?
Ah, um, yes. Ah, but one of the reason, ah Madam Speaker, why, why if ah any, ah, the, the reasons for um stating September thirtieth other than ah historical or previous practice is that we start our budget call late because we are waiting for, again, the official information as to the amount of the annual black grant.
Yes, but the net expenditure program and it's an automatic appropriation, is usually out by January. So, ah, it would be ideal when the ele- first elected parliament seats, for example, we will always have a date of election on May. After May, that they will be able to tackle the budget. But if that's not possible because we have a much smaller budget than Congress, then at least a more reasonable time than pushing it back to the year. Anyway, it's, it, it's, it will be left to a determination ah as we ah move into the period of amendment. Um, I think, I think I have last two more question, two more questions. Um, it says here in section twenty-three ah that ah it's the Chief Minister that will ah submit the budget, no? So, the Chief Minister is the one that submits the budget. But ah, do you know that ah the Chief Minister is only first among equals? And that the executive authority under the Bangsa Moro Organic Law is really ah lodged with the cabinet? And the Chief Minister only heads the cabinet, but the executive authority is with the cabinet?
That is under the Bangsa Moro Organic Law ah in the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority that the ah executive power lies within the ah Bangsa Moro Government Executive and Legislative for the Bangsa Moro Parliament. Um, it, however, it is the ah, the intent or the rationale that it is the Chief Minister who will submit the budget management as he leads the cabinet itself. But i- i- it does not necessarily mean that the executive power li- ah lies solely within the Chief Minister. You are correct, ah Honorable Deputy Speaker, that he is first among equal. That, that is why he will be the one who sub- who will submit the ah, the budget message and the Bangsa Moro expenditure program as well as the BS, BEAS, Madam Speaker.
Yes, ah, that's well taken that he will be the lead in terms of submitting the budget. But in terms of the process and approval, ah it seems that the cabinet's role has been bypassed ah in, 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 in that process. Because as you know, um, ah, in a parliamentary setup, the Chief Minister only subsist or, or maintains his position as Chief Minister as long as he, he has the majority in parliament. And that parli- parliamentary majority is usually represented in the cabinet because they're the ones with the numbers. So, at any time that the numbers change, the Chief Minister will also be changed. And ah, if we empower the Chief Minister to the extent that ah the, the, the role of the cabinet is ah more, more of ah an alter ego than actually ah principals on their own right, then we are not practicing parliamentary democracy or the form or, or of a ministerial type of government.
Ah, Madam Speaker, ah, the approval and as well as the budget proposal of the particular or separate ministries are ah within their discretion is and um ah, subject to scrutiny during the technical budget hearing conducted by the Ministry of Finance Budget and Management. And even prior and after that, after ah the technical budget hearing, the Bangsa Moro Expenditure Program is then presented ah to the ah cabinet ah before it is, they are informed, no? The cabinet are informed of either the, ah, what part of their budget proposal are um approved or what part of their particular budget are reduced and then ah prior to the presentation to the Chief Minister. So, mauna 'yung cabinet, makakita, makikita nila na 'yung Bangsa Moro Expenditure Program and then submitted before the Chief Minister. And then the Chief Minister submits it to the parliament, Madam Speaker.
Um, yes, ah, the, actually, the Minister of Finance is next to the Chief Minister in terms of ah seniority. Ah, in, if you look at the, the British Parliament, ah, the, the most senior, ah, the party leader is the Prime Minister, but the deputy party leader is the Chancellor of Exec here. So, it means that ah that's how important the, the budget is or the ones holding the, the purse, the purse of the, the parliament. It, but in any case, is still ah, a, a part of a cabinet system wherein the cabinet ah are equals in terms of status, in terms of privilege because they represent particular constituencies in the parliament. If it's a, if it's a, a system ah where, wherein ah there, there are clear majorities, it's not so much of a problem because it will be just a matter of ah junior, senior members. But in a system which I think we are going to be experiencing after we have our first election, it will be more of a coalition government. And each member of the cabinet ah will bring his own group into the ministry. And if that ah minister will, will, will assert and ah he will, he will, he will ah insist on their right as a group, no, as a group in parliament, it could actually threaten the stability of the government because ah they can pull out and withdraw their support to the, to the, the leadership. That's why I'm just saying that at this point in time, ah, ah our laws seems to be following or modeling the, the national system. And that's well taken because we said we follow national rules and regulations, and in this case, it's the system. But in terms of approval, I think ah, ah introduction of the, the parliamentary system would be more appropriate, at least with regards to the approval. Ah, rather than following ah a more presidential type wherein we empower the Chief Minister as well as the Minister of Finance ah without considering that they're actually ah in a cabinet system wherein their fellow cabinets can pushback. Because ah, here it seems to be, it's just the Chief Minister and the Minister of Finance talking to each other. Ah, even ah, there's a possibility that the, the Minister of Finance might be from another party. So, they will be contesting with the Chief Minister on who has prerogative. And in the cabinet, it might be possible that the Minister of Finance will have more influence over his fellow cabinet members and the Chief Minister ends up like a figurehead or the compromiser or the ones that, you know, ah, that the others can agree on the, as a form of ah compromise to make him the leader. But actually, the driver would be anyone in the cabinet, could be the Chief, it, it could be the, the Minister of Finance. So, ah, I'm just flagging this, that this system that we are creating might be changed in a more realistic parliamentary setting. But it's good enough that we have this system in place ah before the first parliament. I have been insisting that we have this in place as a legacy for the next parliament. But the dynamics of the elected parliament will definitely be different from the dynamics that we are experiencing right now because under the transition, ah Bangsa Moro Transition Authority, Transitional Government, ah during the transition, the executive authority rests fully with the interim Chief Minister while the legislative authority is with the BTA, Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament. But that will change in um, in, in an elected parliament wherein ah the executive authority will lie with the cabinet. So, thank you very much Mister Speaker. Thank you very much, ah Madam Speaker. Thank you very much ah to the Chair of the CFBM Attorney, Kitim Kadatuhan.
Thank you Deputy Speaker Mastura. Can we suspend the session for a while so that ah we can, maybe ah Deputy Speaker Mastura will take over? Yeah, considering that the presiding officer is, or we will wait for him, for her. One-minute suspension.
Madam Speaker, ah, we have ah one last ah NP to interpolate, Madam Speaker. Ah, I move that we recognize Deputy Speaker Omar Semma.
Deputy Speaker Semma, you're recognized. Kindly proceed with interpolation.
Thank you, ah, Madam Speaker. Thank you Floor Leader. And I hope the proponent will allow me to ask ah, ah a few questions, actually. And this, I believe, this is just, these are just clarificatory questions. Ah, first, on the contingent fund. Section twenty-nine states that the contingent fund shall cover the funding requirements for new or urgent projects and activities of ministries, offices, and agencies that need to be implemented or paid during the ah fiscal year, such as, but not limited to, requirements of newly created ministries, offices, or agencies; B, special projects to align the national ah development priorities; C, deficiencies in the appropriations for ah disaster-related purposes; and ah, and ah, yes, letter D. Ah, legal obligations of the Bangsa Moro Government arising from final and executive decisions by a competent authority, including arbitration awards, mediation, settlement, or compromise agreement; and letter E, urgent and unforeseen requirements in the Bangsa Moro Government. My question, ah, Madam Speaker, is ah centered on letter D. Ah, legal obligations of the Bangsa Moro Government arising from final and executive ah, ah decisions. I think letter D is not germane to ah, ah, I mean, can I ask the proponent whether or not he sees, ah, he consider this, he considers this as germane to ah the intent of ah ah section twenty-nine as considering as these are not new or urgent projects or activities?
Ah, for section twenty-nine, the purpose of a contingent fund will be to fund those which are not funded in the um, ah General Appropriations Act of the Bangsa Moro. I mean, to say if, should the Bangsa Moro Government consent to it being sued and to it being subject to liability, it can choose to fulfill its legal obligation ah to pay for those final and executive decisions by competent authority. The, ah, the, ah, factors which are similar between A to E are ah, is the fact that those ah programs or those ah activities or projects or even this, the payment of legal obligations are not among those ah included in the General Appropriations Act of the Bangsa Moro.
Yes, ah, because ah from my perspective, ah Madam Speaker, I believe letter D is not germane to ah, to what is ah new or urgent projects or activities of ministries, offices, and ah agencies. Ah, while letter E may appeal, may appear to be a catch-all provision, I believe letter D is not ah, is not germane and I believe that And I believe that the remedy here is to separate this letter D as another phrase for the contingent fund, no? But nonetheless, Madam Chair, in the case of... Because the contingent fund is being seen here as alloting a payment for legal obligation. Are we already opening ourselves, the Bangsa-Moro government, to future attachments of our funds, considering that the contingent fund is a fund approved in the appropriations law? So, meaning there is already a fund available, and it becomes an actionable fund, meaning it can be attached? So, are we saying that any complaint against us will give the complainant a remedy to attach this fund?
Madam Speaker, no. This does not open us to automatic consent of being sued and being subject to obligation. As the same, the payment of legal obligation, as stated under D, is still subject to paragraph... The second paragraph of section 29, which is the approval of the Chief Minister upon recommendation of the MFBM.
Yes, may I be clarified? Is the Bangsa-Moro government not empowered to sue and be sued? We are... I believe we are... We have already opened ourselves up to be sued already. We have already consented to be sued. It is in our... It is in the organic law. So, the point here is, we already have opened ourselves up to be sued, and now we're putting clear funds that can be attached by suitors. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Proponent.
Yes, I would consider that this could have an implication that there would be an available fund, subject to garnishment.
Yes.
So, I would consider also if there is a possible recommendation for amendments of the Honorable Deputy Speaker Semma.
Yes, because if we are going to insist on this... I mean, if I may suggest in a future amendment that we remove this provision? And, you know, we will just have to legislate when the time comes that we are liable for any tort or quasi delict.
Because it could be essentially another lumpsome item, unsellable only to a particular final and executory decision. Therefore, Madam Speaker, I submit that if should propose amendment, or should Deputy Speaker Semma propose an amendment, we would seriously consider it, Madam Speaker.
Yes, and in addition to that, Madam Speaker, this should... Would the proponent agree that if we pursue this provision, that there should be a condition there that any complaint or claim should be filed with an appropriate agency? As far as the state is concerned, all claims against the state are filed within the Commission on Audit for any contract, for any claims on a contract. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Proponent.
I agree, Madam Speaker. This will have a... Will help our budget report and budget accountability if we have those following provisions, particularly the reports, and compliance with the COA, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Moving on to my last question. In section... In section 50? Yes, in section 50. Yes, the suspension of expenditure of appropriations. I don't know, how do you see this? I think this provision gives the Chief Minister so much leeway, and even the Minister of the Finance Budget and Management to suspend appropriations of certain ministries. And it has not stated here... It's just stated here that the Chief Minister, whenever in his or her judgment, the final or in his judgment, the public interest so requires, and after due notice to the Minister or head of office concerned, suspend or otherwise stop further expenditure of funds. Can you explain this totally? What is the intent? And how much do you see the power of the Chief Minister on this provision?
Considering right now that Deputy Speaker Semma had explained that there is indeed too much leeway or too much discretion imposed upon the Chief Minister, including the Minister of Finance and Budget and Management, I think the reason for the inclusion of section 50 should be further be examined. And we will welcome an amendment of section 50 to avoid the particular danger of giving too much discretion to immediately suspend expenditure of appropriations.
Yes, because I remember this provision in the DAP cases, that this was an issue raised also in the Development Acceleration Program, the DAP Fund. And this has become a source of controversy during the DAP cases. So, I think without anything more, I will stop my interpolation on this pet bill of the Chief Minister and the Parliament. Rest assured, Madam Speaker, Mr. Proponent, that we will support the passage of this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you Deputy Speaker Omar Semma.
Floor Leader, just one question from the Presiding Officer. I would like to be clarified on... How does this bill address situations when the Parliament passes unfunded laws? I think it's a common happenstance at the national level. And we have been very careful in ensuring that we don't do the same thing, a similar thing in the Parliament. But how does this bill address those kinds of situations? Or is there a space for such to be included in the bill? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, Madam Speaker. With respect to bills passed requiring funding, such as the funding of personal services, their capital outlay or maintenance, and other operating and other expenses, even before, prior to the passing of this law, we have a section, rather, which is contained also in this law, section 29, Contingent Fund, which addresses the funding requirements for new or urgent projects and activities of MOAs, including the requirements of newly created MOAs. The contingent fund here, as defined, is also... Which is the same provisions contained in the previous GAAB. So, this law just codifies or retains the definition of contingent fund and the purposes of contingent fund, such as that the funding of newly enacted laws requiring funding.
Thank you for the clarification, but I think my question covers beyond creation of offices. Say, for example, at the congressional level, they have passed a creation of a hospital in a particular local government unit, but there's no corresponding budget for the same. Or, in our case, creation of the memorial wall, for example, no? So, it will not always be perfect that the Parliament will have a provision in the law that provides for automatic appropriations. So, will this... The contingency fund provision in the bill cover those kinds of laws and not just the creation of offices?
Madam Speaker, there is also, under section 12, shared fiscal discipline, which broadly addresses that particular concern, Madam Speaker. If there is... How we address it will be dependent upon the second paragraph of section 12, that the MFBM shall provide specific guidelines on that matter, Madam Speaker.
In that case, I think we have to also be mindful of the completeness test in terms of delegation of powers based on legislated delegation. That if we would like for the MFBM to provide guidelines on provision of funds for unfunded laws, that we have to ensure that there are specific parameters for the same. So, I say this because, you know, previously in our Parliament, the most of our members of the Parliament would ask for a certification of availability of funds, from the Ministry of Finance, Budget, and Management. So, that's why I'm asking this, because this would be the perfect opportunity to ensure that there are coordination mechanisms between the Parliament and, well, in this case, the Ministry of Finance or the Office of the Chief Minister, to ensure that we don't pass unfunded laws.
That is well taken, Madam Speaker. And if the Honorable Madam Speaker, who would propose amendment, again, we would welcome.
Thank you very much for your generosity. The Floor Leader, please.
Yes, Madam Speaker. There being no more MPs who wishes to interpolate, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of interpolation on Committee Report Number 172 in the matter of BTA Parliament Bill Number 325. So moved, Madam Speaker.
Okay, there being a motion, Julie Seconded, to close the period of interpolation. It is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in view of the time and to give the Honorable MPs ample time to organize their proposals, proposed amendments, Madam Speaker, I move that we defer the period of amendments in a later date, Madam Speaker.
It is hereby moved that the period of amendments be deferred to another date, any second? Okay, there being no objections, it is now deferred. Yes, Floor Leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, next on the agenda is the period of amendments for Committee Report Number 171 in the matter of BTA Parliament Bill Number 59, Madam Speaker. I move that we open the period of amendments.
We recognize the chairperson?
I move that we recognize MP Alindato Pagayao, the Chairperson of the Committee on Labor and Employment.
Okay, Chairperson of the Committee on Labor and Employment, Honorable Pagayao is recognized. I trust that there is already proper communication, early communication on the proposed amendments?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize there are two members of Parliaments who manifested their intention to propose amendments. First, Madam Speaker, I move to that we recognize MP Nagib Sinarimbo.
On this note, we open the period of amendments? MPC Sinarimbo is recognized? MPC Sinarimbo? Who is the second interpolator, Floor Leader?
Yes, Madam Speaker, next on the list is Deputy...
Amendment pala, not interpolator, sorry.
Next to proposed amendments, Madam Speaker, is Deputy Speaker Ishak Mastura. I move to recognize.
Yes, okay, so we will call on... Second call nalang si MPC Sinarimbo. We will request Deputy Speaker Mastura to please start with the proposals of the amendments. One-minute suspension.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I move to recognize MP Nagib Sinarimbo for his proposals.
MPC Sinarimbo, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon to the Floor Leader and good afternoon to our colleagues. especially the distinguished proponents of the Labor Code for the Bangsa-Moro. I propose only one amendment. Unfortunately, I don't have the physical copy of the document. But this one, I think our distinguished proponents can actually guide us into the section that pertains to the application of the code in the economic zones in the Bangsa-Moro. I propose that we delete the section that pertains to the application of the Labor Code in the economic zones and instead insert the parliament may enact legislations defining the rights of labor and the appropriate relations between labor and management in the Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. The reason why I am proposing this is instead of going through several amendments in the Labor Code and since our intention is only to provide a very good, attractive policy environment for investors in the region, we can achieve the same by simply confining new policies in the Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. This approach, in reality, is like the approach of China in its development. If you remember, China was a centrally planned economy and not a market economy. But then Xiaoping realized that they will have to adopt certain capitalist principles if they intend to develop very quickly. What they did was to designate economic zones where free market principles to a limited extent has been adopted. In our case, in the Bangsa-Moro, the Philippines in general and the Bangsa-Moro appears to have adopted the free market principles. And as a result of that, we are just the same with the rest of the country. If we want to create pockets of economic development in the region while maintaining the free market principles in the whole of the region, it may be appropriate to have tailored fit legislations on labor and management in the Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. That's the only intention. And the legislations at any rate would have to be undertaken by the parliament in the future. That's the submission from this representation, Madam Speaker. And if the distinguished sponsors would agree to the proposed amendment, thank you very much.
Yes, Honorable MPC Sinarimbo, do you have the language for consideration of the proponents?
Yes, in fact, I have sent the language to the principal author, MP Romeo Sema.
Okay, MP Pagayao, the proponent, can you please, you may proceed to read the proposed amendment and then please inform us what your take on it is.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I believe MP, the Honorable MPC Sinarimbo is referring to section 113, the coverage, which reads, "This book shall apply to all establishment, projects, sites, including Bangsa-Moro Economic Zone Authority and Shell and all other places where work is being undertaken in all other places in all branches of economic activity involved." We agree with the proposal of MPC Sinarimbo, but not the total change, total change of that. I may, we will add, make it another provisions.
What is the counterproposal?
So that will be the second paragraph, that will form part of the coverage and it will be a second paragraph.
Can you please-
The parliament-
Okay, clarify, ano po 'yung magiging hitsura na, section 113, coverage?
Okay, ang baging hitsura niya, Madam Speaker, is the second paragraph. "The parliament may enact legislations governing labor rights, labor management relations and employment standards within Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones consistent with the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law and national policies on special economic zones."
Okay, we will allow the secretary to encode the counterproposal? Ulit daw po. The parliament may-
The parliament may enact legislation.
Enact legislation?
Governing-
Ulit po.
Governing labor rights.
Governing labor rights. Okay, labor management relations, comma, and employment standards within-
Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. Comma.
Within BEZA, no? Within BEZA or BEZ?
Uritin ko, utitin ko. "The parliament may enact legislations governing labor rights, comma, labor management relation, comma, and employment standard within Bangsa-Moro Economic Zone." Tama. Consistent with the Bangsa-Moro Organic Law and national policies on special economic zones.
So this is the counterproposal. The original proposal, proposed amendment will no longer be part of the final language? MPC Sinarimbo, do you have any response?
Madam Speaker, I think and I thank the distinguished proponents. In essence, I think we have an agreement that there would be a separate rules governing labor and management inside economic zones. Do I get the sense of the proponents that that is our consensus?
Two minutes suspension.
Ms. Holmes?
Okay, Madam Speaker, upon consultation with the principal author of this code, we wish to retain the provision of section 113, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so the records will now show that the proposed amendment is not accepted and the principal author wishes to retain the original provision.
Uh, Madam Speaker.
Yes, MPC Narembo?
Uh, I think ang kanina, ang, ang apparently ang difference lang naman ay 'yung language. 'Yung section 113, I understand from the proponents ay ang wala namang issue dun sa first sentence. Ang sinisikko lang na exemption ay dun sa economic zones in the Bangsa Moro. And kung ayagsana 'yung proponents ay we will retain the first item ng sentence sa section 113 and then pagdating dun sa economic zones ay lagyan lang natin ng except in economic zones in the Bangsa Moro. And then we will adopt 'yung proposal kanina na pinasend ko as the second paragraph. Uh, why is that? Kasi tingin ko 'yung ibang amendments na pino-propose across the different provisions of the Labor Code, pwede namang i-forgo yun. Ang magiging target na lang is 'yung sa economic zones. And in the, in the case of the economic zones, parliament pa rin naman ang magle-legislate nung ano 'yung substance nung magiging laman ng labor standards, labor relations, and other legislations in the economic zones. Wala namang problema doon sa consistency in the BOL because it is a principle in legislation and statutory construction na 'yung BOL will be read into the legislations of the parliament. Kasi yun 'yung governing law, 'yung BOL. 'Yung consistency sa national policies on economic zones, yun lang din ang meron akong issue dahil 'yung economic zones is a power already granted the Bangsa Moro government. At pag ang ginawa natin is a subject pa natin sa national policies on economic zones, 'yung policies natin in the economic zones in the Bangsa Moro, we are in effect surrendering the power already granted to the Bangsa Moro government by the organic law. Uh, kaya yun 'yung pino-propose ko kanina pero hindi lang nagkaidin 'yan dun sa first part nung section 113 dahil hindi ko hahawak 'yung complete na provision but I understand 'yung inihingi ko lang na exemption is in the economic zones in the Bangsa Moro. So that we will allow the Bangsa Moro government through its parliament, the latitude, to formulate the necessary policies para ma-craft natin 'yung legislation sa loob ng economic zones in a way that creates favorable investment policy in the Bangsa Moro as against the backdrop of other economic zones across the Philippines. So alibawa, ang puloy port na economic zone natin, pagpareho tayo ng policies with the national economic zones like in Subic and in Clark, wala talaga tayong maattract na investment. Kasi pareho lang tayo eh. Siyempre, ang gugustuhin nila Clark at sa Subic dahil security wise, mas maganda doon sa kanila. So it is important for us to understand that it may be important to empower the parliament through legislations doon sa mga economic zones natin para mas maging, makacreate tayo ng environment na makaka-attract ng investment sa atin. That's, that's really what, what I wanted to propose in the, in section 113 po.
Here, 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 here.
So, Madam, Madam Speaker?
Yes, uh...
Can we ask MP Honorable MP Narembo do reappropriate wording?
Okay, so the language, we will allow MPC Narembo some time to formulate the language. Meantime, can we go to the next proposed amendment? We will wait for the proposed language, MPC Narembo?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. In the meantime, does MPC Narembo have any other proposed amendment or yun lang po?
Wala na po, yun lang. Yun lang ang amendment na ipopropose ko.
Okay, so we will allow MPC Narembo to submit a proposed language. In the meantime, can we move on to the next proposed amendment from, I understand Deputy Speaker Ishak Mastura, did you?
Yes, Madam Speaker, Deputy Speaker Ishak Mastura submitted his proposed amendments to the secretariat and to the author, Madam Speaker. So may I ask, may we ask the secretariat to flash the proposed amendments on the screen? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
MP Pagayao?
Section 69? Ah, 269, ah, 269.
May I ask the proponent, Madam Speaker, to read the proposed amendments?
I will read first the original text. "Section 6269, implementing rules and regulations or IRR. There shall be implementing rules and regulations to be promulgated by the MOLI after a period of two years to provide a transition from the National Labor Code to this Labor Code. The IRR, the implementing rules and regulations, IRR, shall be crafted with the participation of at least three members of the parliament to provide oversight. The members of the parliament who are part of the drafters of the IRR can ask the parliament to activate an oversight committee of the parliament over this at any time before the IRR is promulgated." "The original text of section 269 is within one year following the effective of this code, MOLI in consultation with the tripartite parties and concerned stakeholders shall issue the implementing rules and regulations. Sorry for the effective implementation of this code for a period of not later than sixty days upon the effective of this code and implementing rules and regulations on title 7, book 1 of this code shall be issued by the MOLI."
So is the proposed amendment...
Madam Speaker, isn't it that the oversight powers is already incumbent upon the parliament? If it is so, uh, we maintain, we maintain the provision as proposed?
Is that the pleasure of the proponent?
Yeah, it's my pleasure if the oversight power of this parliament that include the crafting of the IRR, I, we will maintain, we will maintain the provision of 269.
So that is very clear that the proponent does not wish to accept the proposed amendment. But just to be clear, we are only talking about title 7, book 1 in terms of the IRR, no? Other parts of the code will not be included in the formulation of the IRR?
Yes, yes, Madam.
Okay. Unfortunately, we do not have Deputy Speaker Mastura to respond, no? But that is, let the record...
Pero, pero tama pa rin, Madam Speaker, tama pa rin 'yung pagkaintindi ko na it's incumbent upon the parliament those oversight powers. Because if it is incumbent upon the parliament that oversight powers, I think it's no longer necessary to place that provision in this code.
Uh, in fact, I think the second, the second proposed amendment pertains to mandatory review of the IRR, is that correct? And that solidifies the position that it is in fact parliament that can...
Anong provision? Anong yung provision, mandatory review, meron? Anong provision?
Okay, so can you move on to the second proposed amendment of Deputy Speaker Mastura? Okay, ito na. Section 272, 272.
Eh, supro... Okay. Mandatory review.
This is an additional paragraph, no? Not, not meant to replace the first paragraph. Sige, MP Pagayao, can you please?
Madam Speaker, I do not agree na after na, after the review of the parliament, ire-refer back mo pa sa IGRB, IGRB. Hindi naman siguro require 'yung organic law na lahat ng legislation enacted by this parliament to be referred to the IGRB. If it is not required by the, no, required by the BOL, I think there's no need to, to mention in this code.
Okay, so thus, I think we take it as that the proponent does not accept the proposed amendment?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay, for the record, the two proposed amendments of Deputy Speaker Mastura have not been accepted by the proponents. Thank you, we go back to, or there is another proposed amendment from another MP?
Yes, Madam Speaker, the third and last one on the list, Madam Speaker, is MP Don Loong. I move that we recognize him.
Deputy Speaker, Deputy Speaker Loong is recognized? One minute suspension. One minute suspension. Proposed amendments of Deputy Speaker Loong are now flashed on the screen. Can you please read them?
Yes, Madam Speaker, if I may read them and the proponent may accept or not accept. For the first proposed amendment, Madam Speaker, "In case of conflict or inconsistency between this code and the National Labor Code, the provisions of this code shall prevail within the territorial jurisdiction of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw. The National Labor Code shall apply suppletorily unless otherwise provided by this code or its implementing rules."
What does the proponent say?
Accepted.
Okay, next?
For the next proposed amendment, "The Bangsa Moro government shall promote equal pay for equal work and adopt policies that ensure a gender equal workforce in all sectors of employment. Special attention shall be given to women in traditionally male-dominated industries and to men in female-dominated roles, fostering an inclusive and balanced workforce."
Accepted.
Okay, so the proponent agrees and accepts that it shall be added? This proposed provision will be added na sa second column, no? Add a specific mention of promoting, okay, next?
For the next proposed amendment, "The Bangsa Moro government shall actively work to ensure that vulnerable groups, including but not limited to children, indigenous peoples, PWDs, and elderly individuals are protected against discrimination in the workplace. Efforts shall be made to promote their active participation in all forms of employment, including special schemes for their training, employment, and skills development."
Accepted, Mr. Speaker.
The proposal is accepted?
For the next proposal, "In addition to issuing rules and regulations, the MOLI could be mandated to ensure that labor rights are strictly enforced through regular workplace inspections and a dedicated grievance mechanism." Uh, section, section six.
Can we be clarified of the word "could be", "would be mandated"?
One minute suspension. Questionary rooms? Does the proponent accept the proposed amendment under section six?
No, uh, not accepted.
Not accepted, thank you. Moving on, floor leader?
Yes, Madam Speaker, for the next proposed amendment in section seven, this is a new clause. "The Bangsa Moro government shall provide protection for workers in the informal sector, ensuring that they have access to social benefits, fair wages, and protection against exploitation. A framework for formalizing the informal economy will be established to help workers transition into the formal labor market. The Bangsa Moro government shall ensure that policies and programs aimed at promoting women's empowerment in the workforce are a priority. This includes access to equal pay, leadership positions, and maternity benefits, along with the creation of safe working environment free from gender-based violence or harassment."
What does the proponent say?
Mahirap pagka-bipag tangkap o bag-dinay, ma'am, kasi di klaro kusanya ilalagay. But we have, ano, we have counter proposals. We, we have counter proposals with the assumption that it captures the suggestion, uh, the proposed amendment of the Honorable DS Loong.
For records purposes, do you already have the counter proposal?
Yeah, for later D. Later D, secretariat? Later D shall be read as follows. "Protect the rights and dignity of every worker. Protect the rights and dignity of every worker in the balm desiring to work locally and overseas, organized or organized, comma, in the formal or informal economy, comma, by securing for them the best possible terms and conditions of employment, comma, access to social benefits, comma, fair wages, comma, protection against exploitation, comma, and by providing a framework for formalizing the informal economy to help workers in the formal, informal sector transition into the formal labor market."
Secretariat, please make sure that you capture the counter proposal of the proponents. Deputy Speaker Loong is not in a position to respond? The counter proposal is adopted?
On letter H, on letter H. Letter H. Letter H, "Ensure that programs and policies affecting workers in balm are culturally and gender sensitive, comma, promote women's empowerment in the workplace, including access to equal pay, leadership positions, and maternity benefits, comma, along with the creation of safe working environment free from gender-based violence or harassment."
Okay, so Secretariat, please make sure that you capture the counter proposal of the proponents. There being no opposition from members here, it is now adopted. Next, floor leader?
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Secretariat, can we please show the matrix? Floor leader?
Yes, Madam Speaker, for section nineteen, um, section nineteen, Labor Market Information, or LMI. "The Bangsa Moro government shall establish a comprehensive labor market information system that collects, analyzes, and disseminates data on employment trends, skill gaps, job vacancies, wage standards, and workforce demographics. This information will be used to develop responsive policies and programs for labor and economic development in the region."
The proponents?
Uh, Madam Speaker, there is a proposed additional provision?
Uh, we will, we will hear from the proponents whether they accept or does not, do not accept the proposed amendment?
Uh, upon your consultation with the principal author, Madam Speaker, we will not accept the proposed amendment.
Not accepted, now the proposed additional provision?
Yes, Madam Speaker, for the proposed additional provision, in the same section, the Bangsa Moro government will make labor market data publicly accessible through an open data platform. This data will include information on job openings and demand skills, regional labor market conditions, and wages to help workers and employers make informed decisions.
Proponents?
Uh, not accepted as well, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, moving on, floor leader?
Yes, Madam Speaker, for section thirty, um, it is proposed that, um, there be a paragraph that says, "Provided that a differently-abled person hard to perform the same duties and responsibilities as those performed by a non-disabled regular employee shall be entitled to the same pay, compensation, and benefits consistent with the principle of equal pay for equal work."
Proponents?
Uh, section thirty need not be adjusted, but adjustment will be in section thirty-one.
Okay, so...
So, not accepted, but we accept the amendments to section thirty-one.
Okay, section thirty-one, floor leader?
Yes, Madam Speaker, for section thirty-one, um, uh, there is a proposed amendment that to include the word shall, shall mandatorily between the words employees and reserve.
Accepted.
Proponent?
Accepted as promised, Madam Speaker.
Okay, it is now accepted? Next, floor leader?
Yes, Madam Speaker, for section fifty, this proposed additional items. Letter A, traditional healers and midwives, healot albolario, practicing within their scope of knowledge. Letter B, artisans producing traditional crafts, including weaving, malong inaul, brass making, and wood carving.
Proponent?
Madam Speaker, 'yung world na midwives is not part of the informal economy. So, for that reasons, upon consultation with the principal authors, the proposed amendment is rejected.
So we not accepted, okay, thank you. Next, floor leader?
Um, yes, Madam Speaker, next proposed amendment is to amend section fifty and to include workers in the informal economy referred to as informal sector workers, or ISW, are independent self-employed small-scale producers and distributors of goods and services, such as, but not limited to, letter A, fishers, farmers, market gardeners, shoemakers; letter B, small-scale traders, street hawkers or vendors; letter C, habal-habal tricycle, sika drivers, or small motorized boat operators; letter D, self-employed artisans, tailors; and letter E, other services like barbers, shoe shiners.
Proponent?
Uh, according to the principal authors, it is, parang, it, it looks like a redundant, ano, redundant provision, so not accepted.
Thank you for the response, we move on to the next one. Floor leader?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the next proposed amendment is to add new section following section fifty-one. Uh, baseline data registry. The MOLI, in coordination with the Bangsa Moro Planning and Development Authority and the Philippine Statistics Authority, shall establish and regularly update a regional registry of informal sector workers to serve as a baseline for planning, budgeting, and program implementation under this code.
The proponent, please?
Accepted, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so the additional section is accepted. Moving on to the next proposal?
Yes, Madam Speaker, um, in section eighty-eight, there is a proposed additional clause. "All deductions from wages shall be reflected in a detailed pay slip issued to the worker every pay period."
Yes, proponent?
Uh, accepted, yes, Madam, it is, accepted, but that should be inserted after sub-paragraph C.
Okay, so the counter proposal, it is accepted, but it is counter-proposed that it will be inserted under paragraph C?
After paragraph.
After, so letter D?
No, not, no.
Next, okay, so it's a sentence in paragraph C, okay. Thank you for the clarification, next?
Yes, Madam Speaker, next proposed amendment is in section ninety-four. Uh, MOLI shall review the minimum wage rates at least once every two years or whenever economic conditions substantially change. Public consultations shall be conducted in all provinces of balm to ensure representation from labor, employers, and civil society.
Proponent?
Uh, not accepting, with the reasons that there is a conflict with the national practice of annual review, not once every two years.
Thank you very much, so for the record, it is not accepted. We move on to the next proposed amendment. Floor leader?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, uh, in section, next proposed amendment is in section one zero five. Uh, MOLI shall issue implementing rules to ensure compliance and shall promote awareness programs for employers and employees on cultural and religious inclusion in the workplace.
Proponent?
Accepted, Madam Speaker.
Will this be different from the IRR that's already mentioned in the code? One minute suspension. One-minute suspension. We acknowledge the presence of the Honorable Deputy Speaker Loong. So, proponent, going back to the proposed amendment, do you have a counterproposal?
Our counterproposal, Madam Speaker, is shall include provisions. MOLI shall include provisions in the implementing rules. Rules. MOLI shall include provisions in the implementing rules. Delete the word issue.
The counterproposal, MOLE shall include provisions in the implementing rules to ensure compliance and promote awareness programs. Remove the shall, no? Hindi, hindi. Dun sa second shall po. Yan.
Remove the word shall issue, shall issue. Ah, shall, oh, shall promote.
So, the counterproposal is, as flashed on the screen, MOLE shall include provisions in the implementing rules to ensure compliance and promote awareness programs for employers and employees on cultural and religious inclusion in the workplace. It is now adopted. Next provision, floor leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. For the next proposed amendment is proposed provision. No employer shall impose a dress code that contravenes the sincerely-held religious beliefs or cultural customs of the worker, except when such restriction is based on occupational safety and health requirements duly certified by the MOLE.
Proponent?
Accepted, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. So, this proposed provision is accepted. Moving on to the next proposed amendment.
Yes, Madam Speaker, for the next proposed amendment is in Section 106. Employers with twenty or more employees shall endeavor to provide a designated prayer space or reasonable alternative area. The MOLE shall issue guidelines for compliance and inspection.
Proponent?
Accepted, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so please record that this has been accepted by the proponents. Next proposed amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the next proposed amendment in Section 107. Such break shall be considered compensable time unless otherwise agreed upon. And workers shall give prior notice for scheduling purposes. Employers shall exercise flexibility to balance religious practice and operational needs.
Accepted, Madam Speaker.
Okay, this proposal has been accepted. One-minute suspension.
Thank you, sorry, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in the meantime, we will hold in abeyance the acceptance or unacceptance of this amendment. But with that, Madam Speaker, may we request the proponent, the Honorable DS Loong, to further elaborate to us. What does this mean?
Deputy Speaker Loong? Deputy Speaker Loong, can you please explain?
Yes, Madam Speaker. This aims to ensure that the companies are duly considered in the additional time that is provided for prayer. So, while the break will be considered compensable time, there is still an option where the, where an agreement can be attained between the employer and the employee. This is in relation to what MP Nagib Sinaribo mentioned about the balance between the cost of labor of the employers and the rights of the employee. So, this provision provides that unless otherwise agreed, an option for, is it compensable time or not?
Thank you, Deputy Speaker Loong. May we return to the...
Madam Speaker, with that explanation, we finally accept the proposal.
Okay, so there is already a response from the proponent. We accept. Next provision, please.
Yes, Madam Speaker, for the next proposed amendment in Section 109, this leave may be availed of once during the entire tenure of the employee. The employee shall give reasonable notice of at least sixty days prior to departure. They may opt to use accrued leave credits to cover the unpaid period subject to employer approval.
Yes, proponent? Wait, one-minute suspension. We resume the session?
Okay, Madam Speaker, referring to Section 109, we accepted the proposal, but we will add a press after thirty days.
To cover the unpaid period.
After thirty days. 109, 109. 109 na tayong. 109. Sige, sige. After thirty, ay, dun sa... Hindi, dun sa unahan po, unahan po. Baba, baba. First paragraph. Yan, is without pay and not more than thirty days. After that, kama, and avail of once, and avail of once during the entire tenure of the employee. Hindi, tumusig, secretariat, tumusig, ilagay sa ano ni MP Loong. Amendment ni MP, paritay malito. Itu sa last, last column. After thirty days. After thirty days, kama and avail of once during the entire tenure of the employee. Kama, provided, ay, ano. Entire tenure. Tenure of the employee. Tenure of... Walang year, up. Entire tenure of the employee. Of the employment. Employment? Employee, employee. Employee, employee. Employment? Employment, oh. Employment, oh. Interprete. One establishment, oh, one establishment, oh. Okay. So, iqualipain natin. Um, maglipat siya sa istang establishment, pwede naman siya magavail. Okay. Agree, agree.
Just to clarify, with this language, we are implying that an employee can avail of this leave in every employment that he or she is engaged in. So, it can be unlimited depending on the number of employees.
Employer.
Employers.
Lawyer.
So, that is the legislative intent of this parliament?
Yes, Madam.
Just for the record, ah, because sometimes they need the journal of the session. Deputy Speaker Loong, so we have accepted with counterproposal.
Yes, we support the proponent, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Floor leader.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Yes, Madam Speaker, for the next proposed amendment, Yes, Madam Speaker, for the next proposed amendment, section 110. section 110. Employers shall make reasonable accommodations for dietary restrictions, Employers shall make reasonable accommodations for dietary restrictions, fasting schedules and participation in religious observances. fasting schedules and participation in religious observances. Each establishment shall adopt a written policy and grievance mechanism Each establishment shall adopt a written policy and grievance mechanism to address accommodation-related concerns. to address accommodation-related concerns.
What does the proponent say? What does the proponent say?
Accepted, Madam Speaker. Accepted, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so let the record show that we have accepted this proposed amendment. Next one, please. Okay, so let the record show that we have accepted this proposed amendment. Next one, please.
Yes, Madam Speaker, for the next proposed amendment in section 228. Yes, Madam Speaker, for the next proposed amendment in section 228. The proposed provision, retrenchment and redundancy The proposed provision, retrenchment and redundancy shall be undertaken only as a last resort and shall be valid shall be undertaken only as a last resort and shall be valid only upon submission of financial losses duly supported by audited financial statements only upon submission of financial losses duly supported by audited financial statements or other verifiable documents and validated by the Ministry of Labor and Employment. or other verifiable documents and validated by the Ministry of Labor and Employment.
Deputy Speaker Loong, is this a proposed new provision or something that... Deputy Speaker Loong, is this a proposed new provision or something that... a sentence that will be inserted in section 228? a sentence that will be inserted in section 228?
It's a, it's a sentence that is proposed to be included in It's a, it's a sentence that is proposed to be included in section 228 as part of closure of establishments, Madam Speaker. section 228 as part of closure of establishments, Madam Speaker.
Okay, what does the proponent say? Okay, what does the proponent say?
Madam Speaker, we have counter-proposals to that effect. Madam Speaker, we have counter-proposals to that effect. To read. To read. May I... 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 May I...
Please proceed. Please proceed.
In retrenchment, the same shall be valid upon submission and verification of by MOLI In retrenchment, the same shall be valid upon submission and verification of by MOLI of an independently audited financial statement. of an independently audited financial statement. Kama undertaking of good faith under oath Kama undertaking of good faith under oath that determination is a last resort with commitment, that determination is a last resort with commitment, proper priority rehiring to positions proper priority rehiring to positions for which the retained employees are qualified for which the retained employees are qualified and fair and reasonable criteria in asserting who will be dismissed or retained. and fair and reasonable criteria in asserting who will be dismissed or retained. The audited financial statement should establish that the retrenchment is reasonably necessary The audited financial statement should establish that the retrenchment is reasonably necessary to prevent business losses or if losses are already incurred, to prevent business losses or if losses are already incurred, kama the same are not merely the minimis, kama but substantial, kama the same are not merely the minimis, kama but substantial, kama serious, kama actual and real, kama or if only expected, kama are reasonably imminent. kama serious, kama actual and real, kama or if only expected, kama are reasonably imminent. In the event of redundancy, there must be a clear showing that the positions In the event of redundancy, there must be a clear showing that the positions or services of the employees are super close or in excess of what is reasonably demanded or services of the employees are super close or in excess of what is reasonably demanded by actual requirements of the enterprise to operate economically and efficiently, period. by actual requirements of the enterprise to operate economically and efficiently, period. There must also be fair and reasonable criteria in selecting the employees to be affected There must also be fair and reasonable criteria in selecting the employees to be affected and adequate proof of redundancy such as but not limited to and adequate proof of redundancy such as but not limited to a new staffing pattern, visibility studies proposals a new staffing pattern, visibility studies proposals on the viability of the newly created positions, on the viability of the newly created positions, kama job descriptions, kama and management approval of the restructured. kama job descriptions, kama and management approval of the restructured. This was taken, this is taken from DOLI Department Order Number 147-15. This was taken, this is taken from DOLI Department Order Number 147-15. That's the reference, Madam Speaker. That's the reference, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, MP Pagayao. Deputy Speaker Loong, it is accepted with counterproposal. Thank you, MP Pagayao. Deputy Speaker Loong, it is accepted with counterproposal.
We accept the proponent's counterproposal, Madam Speaker. Thank you. We accept the proponent's counterproposal, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And then this additional proposed provision And then this additional proposed provision will still be part of the same section. Can you please read the floor leader? will still be part of the same section. Can you please read the floor leader?
Yes, Madam Speaker, for the next proposed provision, Yes, Madam Speaker, for the next proposed provision, in the event that the business or establishment which has retrenched or declared positions redundant, in the event that the business or establishment which has retrenched or declared positions redundant reopens or resumes operation within one year, reopens or resumes operation within one year, workers who were separated due to retrenchment or redundancy workers who were separated due to retrenchment or redundancy shall be given priority shall be given priority consideration for a re-employment to positions for which they are qualified. consideration for a re-employment to positions for which they are qualified.
Proponent? Proponent?
I believe, Madam Speaker, these two proposed amendments already covered by the counterproposal. I believe, Madam Speaker, these two proposed amendments already covered by the counterproposal.
Okay, so the counterproposal also covers this proposed provision. Okay, so the counterproposal also covers this proposed provision. We move on to the next proposed amendment. We move on to the next proposed amendment.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I believe Yes, Madam Speaker, I believe that is the last proposed amendments from Deputy Speaker Don Loong. that is the last proposed amendments from Deputy Speaker Don Loong.
Congratulations Deputy Speaker Loong. Now... Congratulations Deputy Speaker Loong. Now...
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and proponent. Thank you so much. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and proponent. Thank you so much.
Yes, Madam Speaker. Yes, Madam Speaker. Now going back to the proposed amendment made by MP Nagib Sinarimbo, Madam Speaker. Now going back to the proposed amendment made by MP Nagib Sinarimbo, Madam Speaker. I move that we recognize him. I move that we recognize him.
MP Sinarimbo, you are recognized? MP Sinarimbo, you are recognized?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for earlier agreement. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for earlier agreement. The proposal now reads, section 113, coverage. The proposal now reads, section 113, coverage. This book shall apply to all establishments, This book shall apply to all establishments, project sites and including all other places where work is being undertaken project sites and including all other places where work is being undertaken and in all branches of economic activity in the BARM and in all branches of economic activity in the BARM except in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones, full stop. except in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones, full stop. Second paragraph, Second paragraph, the parliament may enact legislations the parliament may enact legislations on labor standards and labor relations in the Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones, full stop. on labor standards and labor relations in the Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones, full stop.
Proponent? Proponent? This book shall apply to all establishments, projects, sites and all other places This book shall apply to all establishments, projects, sites and all other places where work is being undertaken in all branches of economic activity in the BARM where work is being undertaken in all branches of economic activity in the BARM except in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. Tama ba? except in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. Tama ba?
Opo, full stop. Opo, full stop.
Okay, full stop. Okay, full stop.
And then second paragraph. And then second paragraph.
And then second paragraph, the parliament may enact legislation And then second paragraph, the parliament may enact legislation on governing labor standards and labor... Tama? on governing labor standards and labor... Tama?
Relations. Relations.
Labor relations... Labor relations...
In the economic zones. In the economic zones.
In the economic zones. In the economic zones.
In the Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. In the Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. In the Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. In the Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones.
So, may enact legislation on labor standards and labor relations So, may enact legislation on labor standards and labor relations in the Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. I think hindi po proper noun 'yung economic zone. in the Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. I think hindi po proper noun 'yung economic zone. So letter, small letter E, small letter Z. So letter, small letter E, small letter Z. Zones. Zones. Wala pong rights, tapos tatanggalin 'yung management. Wala pong rights, tapos tatanggalin 'yung management. Tapos lalagyan ng S, 'yung zones. Tapos lalagyan ng S, 'yung zones. Tapos dun sa first sentence, kama except in, after ng BARM, Tapos dun sa first sentence, kama except in, after ng BARM, after ng BARM, after ng BARM, kama except in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. kama except in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. Pwede pakichange, Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones, dun sa taas. Pwede pakichange, Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones, dun sa taas. Hindi Beza. Hindi Beza. Ganun din, hindi po siya proper noun. Ganun din, hindi po siya proper noun. Because Beza is a government office, so hindi yun 'yung intent. Because Beza is a government office, so hindi yun 'yung intent. Okay, this book shall apply to all establishments, projects, sites and... Okay, this book shall apply to all establishments, projects, sites and... Projects, sites, tanggalin na 'yung end. Projects, sites, tanggalin na 'yung end. Including all other places where work is being undertaken in all branches. Including all other places where work is being undertaken in all branches. Wala ulit 'yung "in all other places undertaken". Wala ulit 'yung "in all other places undertaken". Yan, pakitanggal 'yung "in all other places". No, no. Yan, okay. Yan, pakitanggal 'yung "in all other places". No, no. Yan, okay. Okay, pakit... This book shall apply to all establishments, projects, sites, Okay, pakit... This book shall apply to all establishments, projects, sites, including all other places where work is being undertaken in all branches of economic activity in the BARM including all other places where work is being undertaken in all branches of economic activity in the BARM except in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones, full stop. except in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones, full stop. The parliament may enact legislation on labor standards and labor relations in The parliament may enact legislation on labor standards and labor relations in the Bangsa-Moro, in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. So walang the. the Bangsa-Moro, in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones. So walang the. Tama ba, MP Sinarimbo? Tama ba, MP Sinarimbo?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Correct, yes. Correct, yes.
MP Pagayao? MP Pagayao?
Madam Speaker, may we suspend for one minute? Madam Speaker, may we suspend for one minute?
Okay, one minute suspension. Okay, one minute suspension. What does the proponent say?
Speaker, we will accept it subject to...
Counterproposal?
Counterproposal to delete the word "except". Except in, except in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones.
Okay, so the proponent has responded that it is accepting the proposed amendment with a counterproposal to remove the phrase "except in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones". Okay? MP Sinarimbo?
Can we, can we have a full view of the counterproposal? Just to get a sense of the consistency between paragraph one and paragraph two.
Okay. So now it is going to read, this book shall apply to all establishments, projects, sites, including all other places where work is being undertaken in all branches of economic activity in the BARM, full stop. The parliament may enact legislation on labor standards and labor relations in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones.
And are we, are we, are we of the view... So this is to establish the legislative intent that the legislation that the parliament may come up on labor relations and labor standards inside economic zones may be different from what we are currently discussing and in all likelihood approving?
It appears that based on this language, the general rule is that this code shall apply even to those in economic zones but the parliament may enact legislation on labor standards and labor relations in Bangsa-Moro Economic Zones in the future.
And it may be different from what we currently have?
That is correct, I think, no? Yes.
Would the proponent agree on that?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I will agree with that. Without prejudice, no, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so...
Just to get a clear legislative intent so that in the future when we make the legislation, it would be clear enough that it can be different from what we currently have. Thank you, distinguished sponsors.
Thank you very much. So it is accepted with counterproposal. Floor Leader, any other proposed amendment?
Yes, Madam Speaker, there being no other MPs who signify their intent to propose amendments. Madam Speaker, I now move to terminate the period of amendments.
Any second. Okay, the period of amendments is now terminated. Floor Leader?
Yes, Madam Speaker, in view of the conclusion of the period of amendments and period of interpolations, I now move, Madam Speaker, that we approve on second reading BTA Parliament Bill... BTA Parliament Bill Number 59.
As amended?
As amended.
There's a motion to approve on second reading. BTA Bill Number 59. 59, no?
59.
As amended? Okay, the secretariat... Secretariat, we will... Ano ba? Get the viva voce, vote on second reading.
So we will now vote for the approval of the bill on, as amended, on the second reading. For those in favor, say aye. For those not in favor, say nay.
Aye.
So aye, have it.
Alhamdulillah, congratulations. So BTA Bill Number 59 is approved on second reading. Floor Leader?
Yes, Madam Speaker, with that, Madam Speaker, may let me manifest to the floor, Madam Speaker, that it has come to my attention that the Honorable Interim Chief Minister Abdulrahim Makakuwa has issued a certificate of urgency for BTA Parliament Bill 59, Madam Speaker. May I know from the Secretary General if they have received the official copy of said certificate? Madam Speaker, indeed, the Office of the Secretary General has received the certificate of urgency by the Chief Minister dated September 17, 2025.
Kindly read the letter, Secretariat.
Honorable Attorney Pangalan Balindong, Speaker Bangsa-Moro Transition Authority, Bangsa-Moro Government Center, Governor Gutierrez Avenue, Rosary Heights, 7, Cotabato City. Dear Speaker Balindong, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Pursuant to the provisions of Article 7, Section 25, Paragraph B of the Republic Act Number 11054, I hereby certify to the necessity of the immediate enactment of the BTA Bill Number 59 entitled "An Act Instituting a Labor and Employment Code for the Bangsa-Moro Autonomous Region to Afford Protections to Labor, Promote Employment and Human Resources Development, Ensure Industrial Peace Based on Social Justice and for Other Related Purposes, to Provide a Framework for Labor and Employment that is responsive to the needs, ideals, aspirations and reflective of the culture and traditions of the Bangsa-Moro. For the Bangsa-Moro, signed Abdulrahim Makakuwa, Chief Minister. Copy furnished, the floor leader and the Secretary General.
Thank you, Secretary General. So in view of the certificate of urgency issued by the Honorable Chief Minister Abdulrahim Makakuwa, what is the pleasure of the floor leader?
Yes, Madam Speaker, in view of the certificate of urgency issued by Chief Minister Makakuwa... Yes, Madam Speaker, in view of the certificate of urgency issued by Chief Minister Makakuah, uh, I move, Madam Speaker, that we include in tomorrow's, uh, order of business, uh, the third and final reading of BTA Parliament Bill Number 59. So move, Madam Speaker.
So there is a motion to include the voting on third and final reading, BTA Bill Number 59 in tomorrow's order of business. There being a second and no objection, it will, it is now directed that it be included in tomorrow's order of business.
Uh, Madam Speaker, may I ask for a one-minute suspension?
One-minute suspension.
Yes, Madam Speaker, uh, I move that we suspend today's session until tomorrow, 2:00 PM in the afternoon.
There being a motion to suspend until 2:00 PM, we will see each other, insya Allah, tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Session suspended.